At this hearing, all testimony and evidence must be directed toward this approval criteria or other criteria in the zoning ordinance which you believe may apply. Please note in their decision, the planning commission may reject comments or ordinance citations that do not directly apply to this request. The case will begin with the city's attorney summary of the issues for determination. The applicant will then have 15 minutes for their presentation, followed by 15 minutes for a presentation by Oregon Coast Alliance, who intervened on the city's behalf before Luba. The staff report will follow. Emissioners may then direct questions to those who testified. Those in favor of the proposal and finally those opposed to the proposal may speak for three minutes. Please limit your comments to the criteria and avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is perfectly fine to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker. If you sent a written response to the proposal, please do not repeat your comments. They are already part of the record. And finally, the applicant will be entitled to a rebuttal. I am not certain about leaving the record open or requesting an opportunity to present additional evidence. That's a question for our attorney that I will ask. But it'll be up to the commission to determine. Well, I'm going to leave that, leave that for just a minute. I need to ask first, ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case? Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case?
All right, I have no hands up, Karen.
Okay, thank you, Scott. I figured you'd just jump in when, when there are.
Yep.
Are there any declarations of conflict or bias? Ex parte contact, including site visits by any members of this body? I'm going to go first and say that I have no conflicts of interest. I have no bias. I have had no ex parte contact, except for many visits to the site when I'm walking my dogs. I pass by it and I look at it thoughtfully. Let's go with Phil.
I have no bias, no conflict of interest, or no ex parte contact, other than the fact that I have been to the site on numerous occasions.
Okay, Tom?
I have no interest, financial or otherwise, with this application or this applicant. I don't believe I'm biased in any respect. I don't know anything about the application or the applicant, other than what's in the record, except that I have, prior to joining this commission just a few months ago, many times driven past the site on both Dorcas and Classic lanes. And I've also walked past it. I've looked at it, but at the time I wasn't a member of the commission and had no interest and certainly didn't step on it or study it for purposes of today's hearing.
Okay. John?
While I don't think I have any bias, I think there may be a perception of bias about me in the community, so I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion and the vote.
Okay, thank you, John. Lee?
I have no bias, no conflict of interest, no ex parte contact. I have visited the site several times over the last couple of weeks.
Okay, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any member of this commission to hear this matter by reason of actual or potential conflict of interest or bias?
I have no hands raised, Karen.
Okay. All right, we're going to get, move ahead with our procedure then. Would the applicant please make the case for this proposed development to the, oh, no, I'm sorry. I wanted to have our attorney give us an outline of what it is that we're hearing today.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members of the commission. As you know, this hearing was originally set for May 15th and was rescheduled to today. It's based on proceedings that it started, that happened before the city last year. And I note that, noted that there was no objection to the notice that went out announcing this meeting. So that's really going to be the document that governs the remand issues. But I did want to give a bit of background about why the issues appear the way they do in the notice. And that's because this proceeding is back before the planning commission on remand from the Land Use Board of Appeals, known as Luba. And so just generally, because I don't, I don't believe that the city often addresses remands, and it might be helpful background for members of the public to understand what the remand process looks like. Beginning with the initial decision before the planning commission, issues are very broad. The issues are what the applicant has raised, based on the proposed use that they're seeking and the applicable criteria in the code. The planning commission considers evidence from the applicant, considers evidence from anyone who's in support and opposed, and then makes its decision based on all of that. And that's really where the initial record is formed, is before you on the initial proceedings. After that, the issues get narrower and narrower, kind of like a pyramid. So if there's a request for review after the planning commission has made its initial decision on any land use application, that would be, that would go to the city, and then the city has the opportunity to either ask for new facts or just review it on the record. Here, the city reviewed on the record and made its own final decision, adopting the planning commission's decision. And then the applicant appealed that determination to the Land Use Board of Appeals. So what the Land Use Board of Appeals considers is the record that's built before the city and the issues the applicant raised before the city and the issues that they put into their appeal. And then other parties, so it's just the intervener, Oregon Coast Alliance, had the opportunity to argue before Luba about the contents of the appeal. So where we are now is Luba has made its decision and Luba has basically sorted out the issues that the planning commission cannot consider on remand and the issues that the planning commission must consider on remand. And those are described in the city's notice for this remand hearing. So specifically, what the planning commission is just determining today or addressing today are two, made two overarching categories of factual issues. Some of them have underlying subpoints. And then there's one additional point that Luba made that I'd like to just address. So the first thing for the planning commission to consider is whether the zoning ordinance 3.0304A is applicable to the proposed use and whether the proposed use can comply with that with or without conditions. That provision requires that, as related to the remand issues, the density for this particular zone is 6.5 dwelling units per gross acre. Dwellings may be clustered onto one portion of the site and achieve a maximum density of 13 dwellings per acre, where there is at least 40% of the total lot or parcel reserved or dedicated as a permanent open space, as a public or private park area or golf course. And the open space shall be so indicated on the plan and zoning map. Indeed restrictions to that effect shall be filed with the city. And there will be more information in the staff report about specifically what needs to be determined there. But that's one of the remand issues. The other remand issue is whether the proposed use can comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, section 4, 136, 3C2 and 3C3 and 3C5 with or without conditions. So 3C2 requires that, as related to the remand issues, the resulting development will not be inconsistent with the zoning objectives of the area, particularly with regard to dune stabilization, geologic hazards and storm drainage. 3C3 requires that the area around the proposed development can be planned to be in substantial harmony with the proposed plan. And 3C5 requires that the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area. So that's the universe of issues that are back before the planning commission for this remand hearing. Another direction from Luba was that the city cannot consider the Manzanita Comprehensive Plan provisions when making a determination on this application. And that's the simplest way to say it. I'm happy to go into the details of what their determination was and why, if that would be helpful, but based on Luba's remand order, those provisions are not available for consideration for this particular application.
Okay, would anyone on the commission or the applicant like additional information? Sylvani?
I have no hands up, Karen.
Okay, I do want to thank Frank for attending and I want to back up just a little tiny bit, and I want to make sure that we get you on the record as far as any bias that you might have, any conflicts of interest, any ex parte contacts, including site visits. So if you unmute yourself, Frank, and let us know you're standing here?
Yes, none of the above. No specific site visit, other than I drive that road all the time. That's pretty much it.
Okay, no contacts?
No.
Not, okay, no conflict, no bias. And I just want to invite the public again to let us know if you believe that, that Frank should be disqualified.
And I have no hands.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. I'm going to move forward then and ask the applicant to please make your case on these remand items.
All right, thank you, Karen. I'll start off, I'm Vito Sorelli, the applicant and owner of the property. I was born in Arch Cape and lived in the area. Just giving a quick background for 35-plus years, so no Manzanita and Arch Cape well. When I bought the property a couple of years ago, I had a number of pre-application meetings with the city of Manzanita to review the zoning, the uses of the land in the SRR zone, as well as meeting with the public utilities, sewer water, as well as the fire department within those pre-applications to figure out what to do with the property. And at those meetings, I analyzed and came up with the, it's an outright zone use for a hotel motel, as well as establishments on the property to support that. And with those findings, I designed the property to meet the requirements of, of the hotel use without asking for any variances, setback reductions, or any adjustments to the code. So where we are today is with the hotel application. I've met with a number of the surrounding community members. I've read testimony through these last number of weeks and months. I've had discussion with the city of Manzanita Golf Course owner. And I feel that with approval of the project, I can work with him to create a common business that is in harmony with, with one another within the context of the site. So I think I'm going to turn it over to David to follow up with any other comments.
Great, thank you, Vito. My name is David Peterson. I'm a lawyer with Thomp and Portwell, representing the applicant. Thank you, Sylvani, for your introduction, which repeats the introduction in my notes, so I'm just going to skip right over that and jump into the applicable criteria that are being visited here. The first one is the density requirement in the SRR zone, MZO 3.0304A, which limits density to 6.5 dwelling units per acre, or 13 units per acre if 40% of the site is reserved for open space uses. First, hotel rooms are not dwelling units. So this code provision does not even apply. State law expressly defines the hotel as a room for transient lodgings, not as principal residences, and with common hotel services like housekeeping and a front desk, et cetera. This project squarely meets this definition. But this is clearly a hotel. They are not dwelling units. I would also caution the commission to think about the ramifications of concluding that hotel rooms are dwelling units. That would, number one, be inconsistent with the zoning code as written by the city council, which specifically identifies them as separate permissible uses in this zone. And it could have unintended consequences like making hotels permitted uses in other zones where dwelling units but not hotels are separately allowed. Alternatively, if the commission concludes that hotel rooms are dwelling units, the applicant is willing to dedicate the necessary open space to reach the 13 dwelling unit per acre. First of all, which would allow 49 units, well in excess of the 39 units that have been, or 34 units that have been proposed. The applicant is also happy to share additional information about the design and characteristics of the open space, as requested in the staff report. We have submitted a site plan showing where roughly 47% of the site could be dedicated as open space, generally in the southern part of the site. The proposal will mainly be to leave it in its natural area, perhaps with a trail improvement and some grassy playfield, but otherwise pretty much as is. I would like to touch on Mr. Malone's argument submitted this morning that this procedure would require a comprehensive plan amendment. That argument is not available for this hearing. That argument could have been made in the prior proceedings. This code provision has been under consideration since day one in this application, including the possibility of an open space dedication, so that argument has been waived and is beyond the scope of this remand. Turning next to MZO 4.1363C2, that's the criteria that says the project will not be inconsistent with the zoning objectives of the area, particularly with regard to dune stabilization, geologic hazards and storm drainage. As Luba ruled, hotels are an outright permitted use in this zone. And this project meets all development standards, as the city council found and as Mr. Sorelli just discussed. And the city council, like I said, they agreed in their July 2022 order, there are several statements to the effect that the proposed hotel complex is an allowed use that does not depart from the applicable development standards. And this reviews to consider the project layout. So if you have an outright permitted use that meets all the standards, it cannot logically be inconsistent with the zoning objectives. That's basically something that meets the zoning code, does not meet the zoning code. That's impossible, obviously. Dune stabilization and geologic hazard are not implicated at this site. That's what it says in the staff report, and that's the way that it's been treated since the beginning. So public testimony to the contrary without evidence should be disregarded. And the applicant has submitted evidence that shows that all stormwater would be handled onsite in accordance with city standards. So there's no evidence, no basis upon which, which one could conclude anything other than that this criteria is met. Moving on to 4.1363C3, that criteria says the area around the development can be planned to be in substantial harmony with the proposed plan. It seems like parties are consistently reading this language in reverse. And that, reading it to say that the proposed project must be in substantial harmony with the area around the development, but that's not what it says. It says that the area around the development can be planned to be in substantial harmony with the proposed project. Now, in this case, the area around the development is 100% filled out. The risks to future planning are really not implicated here. Now, mere conclusory statements that something is incompatible, in one's opinion, do not constitute evidence. So there's no evidence at all that the future, that the future of the surrounding area is somehow imperiled from a planning perspective by the development of this project. Now, even if you choose to disregard what the language says and actually read the criterion in reverse, it still becomes impossible to conclude that this project is not harmonious with the surrounding area. Again, it's a permitted use, outright permitted use in the zone. It meets all the development standards. Reaching a conclusion that this project is nonetheless inharmonious would effectively override the zoning code and the decision of the city council in, in enacting that code. On top of this, we have submitted many renderings in the course of the last few weeks that I encourage the commission to review that will show that this project is going to blend quite nicely with the topography and the vegetation and not present any sort of imposing edifice that, that other parties may think it will. I also want to touch on the idea that many opponents have raised about somehow that this project is incompatible with the adjacent golf course for quote, "safety reasons." Well, first I would point out that both golf courses and hotels are expressly permitted uses in this zone. So quite obviously, the city council contemplated the possibility that golf courses and hotels would be next to each other in this zone. Number two, I'd ask that you look at it from a practical perspective. I mean, think of how many golf courses you've seen in your life that have hotels next to them. They're everywhere. The idea that a hotel cannot be next to a golf course is just kind of inherently incompatible, I think, is a bit ludicrous. Some opponents have raised issues of safety. This is a private golf course next to a private hotel. It's hard to envision how the city could be implicated in any sort of accident involving somebody getting hit with a golf ball. At the very least, the government has qualified sovereign immunity for making decisions applying the zoning code. So that strikes me as, as a concern with no real legs. Also, I would just point out that this golf course is surrounded by hundreds of homes already. So the idea that golf course, golf balls create this unacceptable safety hazard just does not fit the facts here. The opponents have also argued that the proposed quote, "community center" onsite will create additional traffic and offsite impacts. This does not match the facts. There is no community center proposed in this hotel. What there is proposed is a gathering place. That will be for hotel guests only, so it will not be generating any additional traffic onto the site. And Mr. Brett Aaron is here from the applicant's traffic engineer over to my right. You can speak more on this issue if you have any questions. Next, I'm on addressing criteria 4.136C5, which is the question of whether the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area. First of all, we've constructed this criteria. I want to highlight an error in the staff report on page one, item G. This is not an application for a planned unit development approval. This is a request for a limited land use decision to approve a use that is permitted outright in the applicable zone. While some PUD approval criteria apply, that does not make this a PUD application. And this is an argument we've made before, and I reiterate it here. The PUD standards of 4.136 are being misapplied because they are written with language being, that would normally be applied to the conditional use such as a PUD, but in this case are being applied to a permitted use, which requires some modification of how they're understood. They always have to be applied in the context of a permitted use. Now, this is important because a PUD approval is a zoning change, but there is no zoning change requested here. As such, the city has already determined that the streets are adequate to support all permitted uses in the zone, which would include a hotel as part of its transportation planning. Without a proposed zoning change, that determination cannot be revisited here. And I urge the planning commission to consider the transportation planning rule, which is ORER 6600120060. And that rule basically says that when rezoning a property, the assessment of traffic impacts must consider the full range of uses allowed, including the most intense potential uses allowed. Thus, when this property was zoned, the city council already determined that, including, because the SRR zone included hotels as a permitted use, the traffic facilities were adequate for that potential use. That determination cannot be laterally attacked in the context of this site plan review matter. I, I'm going to skip over my summary of the traffic study itself because I'm running out of time, but I would recommend that you read the traffic study that we submitted on May 4th, which is now 26 days ago. It, it explains that how even in the busiest Saturday in August, the traffic at that intersection of Classic and Dorcas is going to be, or I have a pop-up here on my window, is going to be pretty minimal. Peak Saturday in summer, the project will increase wait times by 0.1 to 0.3 seconds. That's a third of a second at Lenita and Classic. 1.7 seconds at Lenita and Highway 101, and not at all at Classic and Dorcas. These numbers cannot reasonably be classified as meaningful adverse impacts on surrounding streets. I'd just like to point out that since Mr. Sorelli started this presentation, it's been 12 minutes. And that would mean in the amount of time we've been talking, a grand total of four additional cars would have driven through that intersection on the busiest Saturday in August. But to conclude that that is somehow an unacceptable adverse traffic impact, I think belies the actual evidence in this case. It's important to note that city's traffic engineer Lancaster Mobley concurs in this analysis and also that staff agree that the project will have only minor impacts that will not cause any traffic facilities to operate unacceptably. Mr. Malone has requested that the record be left open in this matter for his counter-traffic study to be submitted. I would, I would point out to you that ORS 1977974, which governs requests to keep the record open, following an evidentiary hearing, does not apply here. That only applies to the initial evidentiary hearing, back before we ever went to Luba. It does not apply on remand. So if the applicant objects to be leaving the record open to any additional evidence after today's hearing, Ms. Miller, I would also direct you to the case Citizens for Responsible Growth versus City of Seaside, a Luba case that talks about this very issue. Mr. Aaron again is here. Anybody has any traffic questions? With my last minute and a half, I'd like to make a few, point out a few random issues, just to make sure we make our record. Page two, item C of the staff report points out that this application does not include a request for design review. This is because design review is not required. I direct you to MZO 4.150. I believe Ms. Ammon may jump in later and confirm that this is in fact is the correct interpretation. But there is no obligation for design review of this application. Accordingly, the applicant objects to conditions B, D and E, to the extent they can be required, the design review. The applicant does not object to a later administrative review to confirm that final layout substantially conforms to the layout proposed in the application. Page three, item D2 of the staff report, just to clarify for you what the staff report is saying. At one time, Mr. Sorelli had considered, considered subdividing this property for residential lots, but that application was never pursued, so there is no partition approved pending for this site. Proposed condition E with respect to stormwater, that's already been completed by virtue of the materials we submitted prior to this hearing. Similarly, we proposed condition K. We've submitted DSL's final concurrence that there are no jurisdictional wetlands onsite. And proposed condition O, the word continually should be deleted. The project is obligated to meet applicable development standards at construction, but only upon an application to renovate the site in the future would it be required to upgrade to new building, into building code requirements. You can't just continually require a building code upgrade in the absence of an application. So that's the end of my presentation. I am at the 15-minute mark. I do want to make Mr. Aaron available for questions, or myself for that matter, if anyone has questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have Sean Malone here? Or someone from Orca?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Sean, you got 15 minutes to, since you intervened before Luba, we thought it was fair that you, that the record would include comments from you as well.
Of course, I appreciate that.
I did, just wanted to ask one thing. Is the traffic engineer from that we have also hired part of the 15 minutes for Orca, or is he, will he be separate?
I'm sorry, who's asking a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Cameron will follow it with Oregon Coast Alliance.
Okay.
The traffic engineer that we hired is also, also wants to speak. Is he part of Sean's 15 minutes? Or is he additional?
That depends on whether he has comments that he wants to make or whether he's here to respond to questions.
I'm not sure. He will have to come in and ask that, answer that himself.
Okay, well, if he has, thinks that he, that he'll be part of the 15 minutes, unless he's here like some of the other consultants, just to answer questions if, if asked.
Hi, this is Rick Nyes with Greenland Engineering. I plan to make comments, not just respond to questions. Thank you.
Okay, so you guys will figure out your 15 minutes together. Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll go first and then Rick, if you would like to jump in, and then Cameron, if you'd like to comment as well. I don't think I'll need more than seven or so minutes here. Sean Malone, on behalf of Oregon Coast Alliance, thank you for the opportunity. The first issue I'd like to address is the request to keep the record open for 14 days. That's, you're allowed to do that. Mr. Peterson quoted ORS 197797 and stated that it's only allowed at the first evidentiary hearing. That's incorrect. It's allowed on remand. ORS 197797 requires the local government to leave the record open on that first evidentiary hearing. On remand, the local government has discretion to do so. Uh, on remand, the local government has discretion to do so. Uh, we, we have a lot of new testimony today, uh, that I've heard for the first time. Uh, the applicant himself stated that he would provide more detail about the plan um, as requested in the staff report. So that seems like, uh, the applicant's almost requesting to leave the record open. And, uh, we would like, uh, the opportunity to, uh, submit additional evidence, and I think the, uh, public may also request that as well. So uh, you're not required to do it at this point in time, but you can, especially when there's new evidence that's been submitted. So we think that's the, uh, appropriate avenue to take here. And, uh, I would also think Mr. Peterson would want it because he hasn't really responded, uh, in a, in a, in a sort of adequate manner to my, uh, testimony, uh, that I submitted this morning. So again, fourteen days would be, uh, preferred, uh, some lesser amount, uh, we can deal with that as well, but you are allowed to do this. There's nothing that disallows, uh, that action by the planning commission. The next issue I'll address is the dwelling unit issue. It sounds like here the applicant's taking two, uh, positions that dwelling units do not apply to hotels, but then that he'll accept that dwelling units do apply to hotels. Well, assuming, uh, we, assuming we'll take the applicant at its word, it's important to, uh, put forth a reviewable interpretation of dwelling units and how they apply to hotels. Uh, in our response, right before Luba, we sort of lay that out, how a dwelling unit is very, it is easily consistent with a, um, a hotel. There, there's a lot of parallels being drawn there. You just have to, the planning commission just has to make that interpretation, and that's why the matter was remanded because there was not a reviewable interpretation. The, the issue that is arises now and that Mr. Peterson got wrong is that now that previously the applicant took the position that this provision doesn't apply. Um, and at no point did the applicant say previously, okay, it does apply, we'll go with it. So the, the remainder of that provision, uh, uh, was never implicated. And now that the applicant has stated, okay, well, except that dwelling units do apply to hotels, uh, that means you have to then address the rest of that criterion. The rest of that criterion requires uh, that the open space shall be so indicated on the plan and zoning map, and deed restrictions to that effect shall be filed with the city. So that means if you're gonna accept this open space and do what the applicant is now proposing to do, you have to change the comprehensive plan to, uh, accommodate that change in designation and the zoning map. So that has to be done. And so that becomes essentially a criterion that has to occur here or at some future point. Um, the, the planning commission has a couple of options in front of it. It can deny the application because the applicant hasn't pursued that. Or it can defer findings on that criterion to a future time. Uh, but that future time has to provide the exact same process and the same participation rights for the public as has been provided here. This is all explained very explicitly in, uh, a case referred to as, uh, Rhine, the Multnomah County, and a bunch of other cases, uh, that I participated in. And so if you're not gonna do it now, if you're gonna defer those findings to the future, then, then you have to provide the same process. Mr. Peterson gets it wrong again when saying that that has somehow been waived. Again, Mr. Peterson, or Mr. Peterson's client never took the position and Mr. Peterson never, uh, took the position, position before Luba that, um, dwelling units did apply. And now that he's done that for the very first time, we then move on to the other requirements associated with that concession. So it's not something that's been waived because it's something that's never been an issue before in this matter. And now that Mr. Uh, Peterson is taking this position that will, will go along with the notion that dwelling units apply, uh, then we have to apply the rest of that provision. So it has not been waived in any way. But if we want to talk about something that has been waived, uh, by Mr. Peterson at Luba, that would be compliance with the P U D, P U D criteria in the, uh, applying the P U D criteria at all. Um, page nine of the Luba decision, this was his eighth assignment of error before Luba. Um, he essentially argued, and I'll just read from Luba's decision here, petitioner's eighth assignment of error is that the city failed to follow the procedures in M Z O four point one three six three E by failing to direct petitioner to file an application. Oh, excuse me. Got ahead of myself there. This is the sixth assignment of error that was waived. Uh, in their sixth assignment of error, petitioner argues that the city misconstrued the M Z O by applying the P U D criteria in M Z O four point one three six to its application. And because it's application for permitted use in the S R R zone, the discretionary standards in M Z O four point one three six do not apply. That's on page eight of the Luba decision. You go down to page nine. Uh, Luba does a brief review and they conclude that the sixth assignment of error was not preserved as required by O R S one nine seven, seven nine seven one and so forth. So the very issue that Mr. Peterson is arguing, uh, that the P U D criteria provisions do not apply, that was explicitly waived by Luba or before Luba, and Luba explicitly ruled on that. So you can't get a second bite at the apple on that one. Um, with regard to the issue, the traffic issue, again, we're requesting that the record be left open, and I understand Rick is here to testify. And the final issue about the substantial harmony, I think you have to really look at, uh, the people who live in the area uh, and, and, and take their testimony, uh, at, at face value and, and the evidence that they're providing and, and make your determination based on that. And I think it's, it's, it's easily, the, the board, the commission is easily capable of finding that it's not in harmony, and I would defer to those local individuals who are submitting testimony. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I also want to allow, uh, Rick and possibly Cameron to, uh, provide some commentary.
Well, good morning. My name is Rick Nyes, and I'm principal traffic engineer with Greenland Engineering. I've been asked to review the transportation impacts of the proposed development. I have previously questioned why the applicant has thus far not been required to improve their frontage along Classic Street. I've noted that the city's downtown transportation plan adopted a classic street cross-section, which includes two twelve-foot travel lanes, a six-foot wide landscaped buffer, and a ten-foot wide shared bicycle and pedestrian path. The development's classic street frontage is far from compliant with this adopted roadway cross-section with inadequate width and lack of any separation for bikes and pedestrians. I've also pointed out that it is commonplace for developments in Oregon to improve their frontages to comply with an agency standard cross-section requirements. In his April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three traffic impact study scoping memo, the city's contract traffic engineer wrote, and I quote, "The traffic impact study shall address the current and future cross-section of Classic Street along the site frontage." If frontage improvements are not being provided that bring the street into compliance with applicable standards, justification shall be provided. In this statement, the city's traffic engineer acknowledges that the adopted cross-section is indeed the city's standard and justification is needed if the adopted cross-section is not supposed to be implemented. In addressing this requirement, the traffic impact study notes that, and I quote, "Consistent with the character of the neighborhood, the project will not provide sidewalks on the street frontages. The city's roadways are intended to be shared by all users with slow speeds and low volumes encouraged by the narrow roadways." As the city has specifically adopted a cross-section that directly conflicts with the applicant's statement, and the adopted cross-section separates bikes and pedestrians from vehicular traffic, this argument is not logical. The traffic study further notes that no frontage improvements are proposed with the project, and no request has been made to widen the roadway or provide a separate path, nor was such required with development of the cottages on the east side of the roadway. This does not justify the mission of the implementation of the required standard. If a mistake was made on a previous application, or if requiring improvements was not lawful on that previous application, that would not necessarily apply to this particular application. The applicant's analysis falls well short of adequate justification about why standard fringe improvements are not being provided. It is clear that the city acknowledges that the classic street standard acknowledges the classic street standard and has required justification about why it won't be constructed. The applicant is responsible for illustrating, and the city must find that the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic, which includes vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian traffic, not just vehicular traffic. I'll finish again by asking, why isn't the required cross-section being implemented? Thank you.
Uh, this is Cameron Lefalot, uh, executive director of Oregon Coastal Alliance. I have no other comments to make and would give any remaining time to Sean for further uh, arguments or discussion, uh, except to reiterate his point that finding substantial harmony with this, uh, with respect to this project is not a matter of vegetation and, uh, frontages. It is a matter of whether the development fits into the surrounding neighborhoods, and it's clear from the testimony of many people uh, who live in town in the area that it does not. So I, with that, I will give all my, any remaining time back to Sean.
Thank you. Uh, the only thing I'll point out is that there were also several objections to conditions. I haven't seen those in the written materials as of yet. So again, to the extent that there are new arguments being set forward, then we should have the opportunity to respond to those. Um, and leaving the record open is not something, the planning commission has discretion to do it, but if the planning commission does it, it is not legal error in any way to do that, to afford the public, uh, the opportunity to respond to what's going on. And more, moreover, the, the time limits that normally apply to a local government's decision in a land use application, limited land use application, uh, do not apply in remand. So you don't have to be worried about, uh, a, 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 a clock in the background going, uh, there is no clock, as it were, on remand. So um, there doesn't seem to be any pressing need to, uh, get things done immediately as far as the planning commission is concerned. So again, we would just respectfully request that the, uh, record be left open to provide additional testimony. And it sounds like the applicant submitted, um, at least made new arguments, and even the applicant himself has stated that he's willing to provide further detail. And that's been requested by, uh, members of the public as well. So uh, with that, if there's no more questions, uh, it sounds like the staff report is up next.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Um, yes, you are correct. It is, um, up to the staff report at this point. Is that gonna be you, Leila?
It is indeed. Um, thank you, Chair, and members of the planning commission. So I'll be presenting the staff report for this application today and beginning with, uh, section A, which is that Luba ordered the planning commission cannot consider the man's need a comprehensive plan provisions making its determination on the application on remand. Um, this is because Luba has ruled that the decision on remand to the planning commission is a limited land use decision, and accordingly, only the land use regulations themselves, here, that is, the man's need a zoning ordinance can be used in making a decision, uh, to, on the application. More specifically, under Oregon law, cities and counties are required to incorporate all comprehensive plan standards applicable to the limited land use decisions into their land use regulations. If a county or city did not incorporate that, the comprehensive plan provisions may not be used as a basis for decision by the county, the city on appeal from that decision. And that's based on O R S one nine seven dot one nine five one. So the findings related to this is that the issue does not present a decision point for the planning commission. Instead, the planning commission must make its decision based solely on the man's need a zoning ordinance provisions without reference to the man's need a comprehensive plan. Uh, B, so addressing M Z O three point oh three oh four addresses density standards for the development of a special recreational zone, or the S R R. In the S R R, the following standards shall apply. Overall density for the S R R zone is six point five dwelling units per acre, per gross acre. Dwelling units may be clustered on one portion of the site within the S R R zone and achieve a maximum density of thirteen dwellings per acre, where at least forty percent of the total parcel area is reserved or dedicated as permanent open space as a public or private park or golf course. The open space shall be so indicated on the plan and zoning map, and deed restrictions to that effect shall be filed with the city. Uh, Luba has accepted that the proposed use is a hotel. And that the proposed use is therefore a permitted use in the city's S R R zone. The city's ordinance does not define the term hotel, so for context, we're relying on Oregon law to define a hotel, which is as follows. A hotel or inn means a property, however owned, and including a condominium under O R S chapter one hundred, which rooms or suites or rooms generally are rented for transient lodgings and not as a principal residence. Transient lodging means a room or suite of rooms that is not occupied as a principal residence. A, per by persons of periods less than thirty consecutive days, and B, with which services normally offered by hotels, including but not limited to daily or by daily maiden service, a front desk, and a telephone switchboard are provided, regardless of the length of the occupancy of a person. Luba has found that the city's initial denial on the application adopted an equivocal finding that this density standard could apply if the hotel's units are considered dwelling units as defined in M Z O one point oh three oh, without deciding whether the units are in fact dwelling units. Luba remanded this portion of the decision back to the city to provide further interpretation and determine whether the density standard in M Z O three point oh three oh four A applies to the application. In the request for remand hearing, the applicant noted he disagreed with the density standard applies to the hotel project. However, the applicant has also stated that he is willing nonetheless to reserve or dedicate forty percent of the site for open space, public or private park area or golf course, thereby increasing the maximum density of thirteen units per acre. At the time that the staff report was written, we did not have additional information from the applicant, but that has been submitted and was with the planning commission. Um, but the findings staff has offered too. So in accordance with Luba's remand order, the proposed use is a hotel and is permitted in the S R R zone. Therefore, planning commission may address this in two ways. First, because the applicant has agreed to meet the density standard, despite disagreeing that it should apply to the hotel project, the planning commission could determine that this recommend requirement is met or can be met with a condition of approval without making an interpretation about whether some or all of the hotel units are dwelling units for the purposes of M Z O one point oh three oh, or whether the density standard in M Z O three point oh three oh four A applies to the proposed use. In this instance, staff would recommend that the planning commission rec, request additional information from the applicant at the hearing about the design characteristics of the proposed dedicated open space, public or private park or golf course, as proposed, open space may have offsite impacts with respect to traffic development planning in the area and around the proposed use and storm drainage. And as I mentioned, when the staff report was written, we hadn't received additional information, um, some of which has been included in the packet. The second option is the planning commission could make an interpretation about whether the hotel units are dwelling units for the purposes of M Z O one point oh three oh and whether the density standard in M Z O three point zero three zero four A applies to the proposed use. If the planning commission decides that the hotel is not subject to the density standard, then the applicant need not meet this requirement. If the planning commission decides that the hotel is subject to the density standard, this requirement can be met with a condition of approval reflecting the applicant's agreement to reserve or dedicate forty percent of the site for open space or public, private area or golf course. The next item is related to M Z O four point one three six three and addresses the planned unit development procedure. With respect to the issues on remand, the following procedures shall be observed and applying for and acting on planned development. M Z O four point one three six three C, the planning commission shall consider preliminary development plan at the meeting, at which time the comments of the persons receiving the plan for study shall be reviewed. In considering the plan, the planning commission shall seek determination that, two, resulting development will not be inconsistent with the zoning objectives of the area, particularly with regard to dune stabilization, geologic hazards, and storm drainage. As discussed in section A above, in accordance with Luba's ruling, the city may not consider whether the application complies with the man's need a comprehensive plan when making its determination. Luba also recognized that under M Z O three point zero three zero two H, hotels are permitted use within the S R R zone. Staff findings suggest that ordinance ninety-five dash four in the adopted zone map established the S R R zone, a zone which permits residential uses along with compatible commercial activities. And among these very limited commercial uses is a hotel, which is the subject of this application. In accordance with this and Luba's remand order, the establishment of a hotel of permitted use is solely limited to compliance with the is solely limited to compliance with the applicable development standards contained in ordinance ninety five dash four. The proposed use is not in an area that affects dune stabilization and staff is not aware of any geologic hazards that would impact or be exacerbated by the proposed use. Storm drainage is a potential concern regarding the proposed use. The Mansanita storm drain system is now designed to handle street runoff and limited excess runoff from adjacent properties. The portion of the city's stormwater drainage system that would serve these properties located on Dorcas Lane. Excess stormwater runoff could cause strain on the existing stormwater drainage system, if not addressed onsite, and may limit or negatively impact future development in the area if future development must account for stormwater. However, properties are required to handle stormwater onsite per the city's drywall and infiltration system standards document. These standards are designed to prevent and minimize stormwater runoff from the adjoining properties and minimize the impact on the storm drain system. The applicant has indicated to staff that stormwater runoff will be handled onsite. Staff recommends a condition that stormwater runoff be addressed onsite per the drywall, drywall and infiltration system standards. Number three, the area around the development can be planned in substantial harmony with proposed plan. As discussed in section A, in accordance with Luba's ruling, the city may not consider whether the application complies with the Mansanita Comprehensive Plan in making its determination. It must rely on the Mansanita zoning ordinance. With respect to this criterion, single-family residential development is the primary development activity in the vicinity along with the golf course located to the west. Site topography places most of the structures below residential uses to the east. The golf course tree canopy to the west provides additional separation and screening. The S R R zone also specifically lists hotels as a permitted use along with residential development. On remand, the applicant argued in his May fifth twenty twenty-three letter to the planning commission that the hotel is an outright permitted use that otherwise meets all applicable development standards and cannot logically be in harmonious with the surrounding area. We heard testimony to that effect today. As reflected in the record, opponents to the application have raised concerns that the proposed project is not in substantial harmony with the area surrounding the development. As reflected in the record, the opponent's argument include that the proposed use is not in substantial harmony with existing development, including arguments that is incompatible with the existing golf course for safety reasons, and that the proposed community center would create additional traffic and other offsite impacts. Staff findings, as the applicant acknowledges in his May fifth twenty twenty-three letter, the council in prior proceedings appears to have interpreted this provision to require that the proposed use be compatible with the existing area around the development. An alternative interpretation would be that this provision further requires the applicant meets this requirement with respect to future development. The planning commission has to decide, without reference to the Comprehensive Plan, whether the application meets this requirement. As with the other issues on remand, all parties will have an opportunity and somehow already to make their case. If the planning commission finds that evidence within the record supports the applicant's conclusion, this criterion is met, the planning commission should approve the application. If the planning commission finds that the evidence in the record does not support the applicant's conclusion that this criterion is met, it should deny the application and specifically note from the Mansanita ordinance, what, for what reasons. Finally, five, the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside the planning area. Luba determined that the city's denial was not supported by substantial evidence in the record with respect to M Z O four point one three six C five and that the record did not support two of the planning commission's conclusions. First, Luba noted that both the applicants and the opponent's traffic engineers estimated that the project would generate up to three hundred and nine vehicle trips on a peak day, a Saturday in the summer, which did not support a finding that the project would generate more than three hundred and nine trips per day. Remand order at twenty eight, second. Second, Luba found there was no evidence in the record to support the city's conclusion that many of the trips would be directed downtown. Luba remanded the portion of this decision to the city. In accordance with the city's notice at a public hearing, the record is reopened to consider this new evidence. The city of Mansanita's transportation engineer provided a scoping letter to the applicant on April thirteenth to provide an updated transportation impact study to address the issues raised in the remand order and all note to by members of the community. This is posted as part of the packet. Findings, there is, there will be a single driveway servicing the site. Neither ordinance ninety five dash four or ordinance ninety five dash five contains minimum driveway widths with improvement requirements. To ensure two traffic lanes is recommended, the minimum width would be twenty-two feet with paving acceptable to the Department of Public Works. Staff found in its initial staff report dated March tenth that the proposed use could comply with this criterion so long as these conditions are met. On May fourth, twenty twenty-three, the applicant submitted a transportation impact study conducted by McKenzie for Mansanita Lofts Motel dated May third, twenty twenty-three. On May fourth, twenty twenty-three, Lancaster remotely, the city's contract traffic engineer reviewed the findings from McKenzie's traffic impact analysis. These can also be found as part of the packet. After reviewing the records and these additional materials and with input from the city's contract engineer, staff finds that the T I S through the Mansanita Lofts submitted on May fourth, twenty twenty-three complies with the scoping letter provided to the applicant and demonstrates that impacts from the project will be minor with all study area intersections operating acceptably within the project, with the project in place. I do want to note that the corrections stated by the applicant with respect to the potential recommendation and conditions of approval, B, D and E, where it states designer view should read building permit review. The applicant is correct, there is no design review required for this application. But we do require, we do recommend conditions of approval should the planning commission find to approve this application that anywhere it states design review should be replaced with building permit review. That applies for, again, B, construction of individual buildings shall require building permit review application and approval. The applicant has the option of submitting a building permit review application for each building. Section D, building permit review applications and association engineering plans for phase one shall be submitted within two years of date, et cetera. And then finally, section E, all stormwater runoff shall be addressed on the subject property. Applicant shall provide a stormwater runoff design plan for approval to the city during the building permit review phase of the project. And I will note that we have our, the city's contract engineer available as well. Should there be questions of the planning commission related to any of the traffic items?
Okay, I would like to request information from the city's attorney as far as what portions of the record are being reopened. I understand that we need to consider additional information on the traffic impact study. Are we also considering additional information on the density standard? Is that up to us to determine whether we wanted your additional information on that? Or are we to disregard anything regarding the density standard because that record is not reopened?
So the, the notice allows for additional evidence, argument and testimony on the remand issue. So limited to the issues that have been remanded, but the record has been reopened. And I believe the parties have submitted evidence already that touches on those other points as well.
Okay, you know, I did not see a copy of the notice that went out and it would have been helpful for me probably to have requested that ahead of time. Okay. We are, let me check my notes here, at the point where the commissioners can direct questions to the applicant, to ORCA or to staff. Go ahead, Tom.
I have several questions for several of the people who've spoken. First of all, Mr. Peterson. I was a little taken aback by your suggestion at one point that this should not be reviewed under the planned unit development rules. Your application calls it a planned unit development. It checks the box in the form for planned unit development. And I just quickly went through the record from before and everybody has been talking about planned unit development throughout these proceedings, including your own submissions and also referencing the planned unit development rules. So how is it you're now taking the position that it's not really a planned unit development application and those rules don't apply?
Well, since I became involved with that, roughly right before the hearing last June, before the planning commission, ever since that time, I advised my client and we have just specifically been taking the position that it is not an application for a planned unit development. It's an application for permitted use in the zone. The fact of the matter remains that the way the zoning code is written, it incorporates certain criteria that from the planned unit development section of the code. But just because it incorporates some of the planned unit development criteria, that does not make it a planned unit development. And that, and I believe maybe Mr. Malone kind of overstated my point. I'm not saying that the criteria don't apply. That is in fact an argument we made to Luba and lost on in terms of having preserved. But the criteria do need to be read in the context of the underlying application. And the underlying application is one for permitted, outright permitted use that meets all the development standards. And where this comes up most significantly is with respect to this criteria about harmony. Right? I think it stretches logic to argue that an outright permitted use of a zone that meets all the applicable standards established by the city can somehow be inharmonious with that same zone. And I will once again flag here, just to make sure that I'm making my record, that in fact, that criteria needs to be read in the opposite direction. And it's about the future development of the surrounding area, not the development of this project. But to answer your question about planned unit development versus not, that's my answer.
Okay. So, but it is, was submitted and the pending application that we're reviewing is for a planned unit development and so those criteria do apply.
No, it's not an application for a planned unit development. It's an application for a permitted use in the zone. And the approval criteria for permitted use in the zone includes some of the criteria that would apply to a planned unit development. I think maybe to help you illustrate this, I would suggest going back and reading the other provisions applicable to planned unit developments under section four point one three six of the code that don't apply in this context, such as the procedures to be followed. When one actually applies for planning at development, there's a long, I believe, ten step procedure in that code that hasn't been used here. This is just a consequence of a cross-reference within your code of certain criteria applicable to planned unit developments carried over to the permitted use site plan determination.
Okay, I get your point. Another question I had is in response to Mr. Malone's presentation. You said the issue about the need to change the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning map to accommodate your proposal for dedicated open space was waived because it wasn't raised earlier in the proceedings before appeal. But it seems to me that point only came up because on remand from appeal, your client for the first time suggested that he would dedicate forty percent to open space. So how could they have raised? How could Mr. Malone have raised that point in advance of your proposal to increase the open space to forty percent?
Well, I have two answers to that. First of all, I'm confident that if you go back and review the record prior to the decision of the city council last July, that we did in fact make the argument in the alternative that hotel rooms are not dwelling units, but even if they are, we can meet the standard with the open space dedication. So I don't think it's correct to say that this is being raised for the first time on remand. It's only become important on remand by virtue of Luba's ruling where Luba basically concluded that the city never made a definitive decision applying that particular criterion.
Well, this may be important. So if you have an opportunity later in this hearing, could you go back and find the place in the record where you actually made that suggestion? Because I just looked for it and didn't find it. And if it was raised before in a way that would have required Mr. Malone to make his objection, I'd be interested in seeing that. Thank you. And my last question to you.
Well, I actually had a second answer, second piece of answer to your question.
Okay.
Which is, you know, I think that to some degree, the question will become moot if the planning commission in effect accepts staff's advice and takes the takes the approach that effectively says they can, don't have to determine whether hotel rooms or dwelling units are at all and just accept the condition of approval or impose the condition of approval that the applicant's willing to agree to and take a dedication of open space, not having to decide whether it's required or not.
Yeah, I understand that, but I will have some comments on that proposal later. My other question for you, and this came up in staff's report too, I don't understand why people are referring to the definition of hotel in the Oregon revised statutes, that the definition in the statute applies to those statutes. It has no relevance. It's not incorporated into the Mansanita zoning ordinance. So I, I don't see what that matters at all. Can you help me with that?
Well, you're, I believe what Ms. Ammons said in her report was that your code does not have a definition of hotel at all. So her staff practice is to use the state law definition as the city's definition. Are you stuck with that? No, I don't think you are. I think that's a recommendation from staff.
I think that's the wrong methodology unless the code adopts a specialized definition in some other law, including the Oregon revised statute, you define hotel by its common and ordinary meaning. So we'd look at.
That's a decision for you as a member of the commission and perhaps something you need to have a dialogue with staff about.
Okay. And then my last point, and I'm sorry if I'm taking too long, is if we get to the, to the, whether these are a dwelling unit with, that's a defined term in the code. And so whether these structures your client is proposing to build are dwelling units, we would look at the code terms. So the issue isn't, as I think you posed it, is a hotel a dwelling unit? That's kind of meaningless. Hotel is not defined. Whether this is a dwelling unit in addition to being a hotel, we would simply look at the definition of dwelling unit in the code.
Okay.
So I think what I'm getting at is it seems to me the issue isn't whether a hotel is a dwelling unit or not. That's meaningless. What's relevant is, are these proposed structures dwelling units as defined in the code?
I don't, if, if, if you're coming to the conclusion that I suggest you ignore the definition of dwelling unit in your code, I retract that. I don't suggest that at all. I think you do need to read the definition of dwelling unit in your code. However, you also need to take a look at how the terms dwelling unit and hotel are used in your code. And perhaps the most striking example that's relevant to this question is how dwelling units and hotels are separate permitted uses in this zone. Whereas if you maybe look at one of your other residential zones, well, not maybe. If you do look at one of your city's other residential zones, you'll find that dwelling units are permitted, but hotels are not. So I think you have some contextual analysis to do to consider the consequences of concluding that a hotel room is, meets the definition under the city code of dwelling unit. Because of the, among other things, it's the, it it contradicts the structure of some of the other provisions of the code and like I said, lead to some consequences that you don't want.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. I had, had one quick question for our attorney. Which, I'm a little confused about whether we have the authority to keep the record open or not. Mr. Malone said we do, that there's no clock running ticking as we sit here. That's within our discretion to keep it open. Is that true?
So I do, I disagree about the, the, the clock piece of it. So ORS 227181 says that a final action is required within 120 days following a remand of a land use decision. So after there's a final order from the Land Use Board of Appeals, remanding the decision to the city, you have 120 days to, from the effective date of the final order to make that decision. Um, the, the reason that we are in the timeline where we are now is because the is because the applicant basically kicks off that process. They have 180 days from the date of that decision to request a remand, and then the 120 days runs from the time of that request. And so we are on a, a time clock and by our calculations that runs on July 28th, 2023. And as you've heard from the applicant, they are not willing to agree to extend that deadline. Um, there is still some flexibility within this, within the timeline to keep the record open. Um, I think I agree with Mr. Malone that it wouldn't be legal error to keep the record open at this point, even though it's not the initial evidentiary hearing. Um, but it, it would, and there may be, there may be some argument that, um, the parties could present about whether uh, whether the, any extension in this circumstance would automatically extend the timeline for which the city could make the decision. But the, the most conservative way and the safest way with, could be to grant a smaller, um, a smaller time period by which all the parties could submit additional evidence. So maybe not 14 days, but seven days, and then give the applicant an additional seven days to respond to that evidence with just argument. Um, and that could potentially still fall within the timeline. It would in it put some pressure on staff to make, to get written decisions and finalize those. And then it may also restrict the type of review that council could conduct. If it, if this decision were appealed by either party to the council, um, or by either side to the council, it might restrict the ability or the way that they would be able to conduct their review. So it might have to be an on the record review to fall within the timeline.
Okay.
That answer you?
Sorta. Thanks.
I guess to sum it up, you, you, uh, you are allowed to leave the record open. We are on a timeframe. And if there, if the, if the commission is inclined to keep the record open, then we will want to be careful about the calculation and how long the record period is left open in order to not get in the way of the timeframe that it has to make that decision.
Are, are those deadlines extendable with the consent of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, any other commissioners wish to ask some questions? Go ahead, Phil. Uh, could you unmute yourself? Bill, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Karen, I'd like to ask a question of you. Um, can we ask questions with regards to the site plan that was issued with this packet of information? It pertains to impervious services, both surfaces and also drainage. But it's related overall in the parting.
I believe that the only issues that we can discuss today, and I'm hoping our attorney will, um, confirm are issues related to density and, uh, whether or not the uh, development meets the code for density and the traffic impact study. Am I correct in that assumption?
Drainage was mentioned several times.
So yeah, so there, there are, um, there's the density issue, just kind of short handing these density issue. Um, the storm drainage is another area that staff had highlighted, um, for consideration. That is one of the remand issues. It's part of a larger group of considerations, but that's the only piece of it that really would impact this development. So I think that that might be where your, um, where your question is coming from relating to storm drainage, the substantial harmony, and then the traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, one question I had with regards to the traffic is when the analysis was done, how did they make an estimate as to the total amount of potential homes might be in Highlands? And also how much, how would they, how did they make an estimate with regards to Pelican's Perch? Which is on Third Street and yes, yeah, undeveloped.
This is a, a vehicle traffic related question or a storm drainage question? I'm sorry.
Vehicle traffic.
Turn the camera for Brent. They asked about, you might want to repeat the questions because if you would repeat the question, please. We were, thought you might be talking about stormwater, but.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Okay. So how was the calculation made with regards to the overall size of the development for Hillside and also Pelican's Perch, which is the undeveloped area on Third Street? Was it incorporated into the study?
So, uh, for the record, Brent, Aaron, I'm a traffic engineer with McKenzie. I prepared the, uh, traffic analysis for the applicant. So I'm not, it's not ringing a bell as far as the, uh, the projects, but, but basically what we did is, is the in-process projects that we included, we looked at either a traffic analysis that had been prepared for those projects, or we looked at what the project entails and estimated the trips following the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. So that's how we estimated trips from other projects. And we add that onto the existing traffic before we look at the impact of this project. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes and no. Um, did you come up with a total count for Hillside and a total count for Pelican's Perch with regards to homes on site when they're fully developed?
Those are exist, those are existing projects that have already been built?
No, sir. They're in, under development or they're about to be developed.
Can you explain which one Pelican's Purchase location?
Uh, it is directly to the south of a six-unit development that was put in uh, on Third Street, I believe last year it was completed.
Okay. That, that might've been a different name. That, is that the one that, um,
You may be calling it something else.
Yeah. Is that Heron's Rest?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Yeah, we included the, the trips for uh, 26 dwelling units there, because that one is, uh, is actually homes. That's what was proposed.
Okay. And how many did you have for Hill, uh, Hillside?
I'm not sure which one that is. Why don't you read off?
Highlands, Phil?
Pardon?
Highlands.
Highlands.
Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Um, maybe you can go through these, Mr. Ahern, but staff requested that they include Heron's Rest, Steeplejack Brewing, potential expansion of Manzanita Deli, Highlands Residential, Whispering Pines, and then there were three units of the Southwest Corner Pacific Lane that were requested to be included in the analysis. And I have. But.
For Highlands, we, we included 53, uh, dwelling units.
Is that current count or is that in, uh, does that take into consideration future development?
Well, all, all we have to include is development that is approved at the time of our application. So anything that comes after this project that isn't approved yet would have to do their own analysis and address what their impacts are after our project is approved.
Okay.
And, and similar to what was noted before, the city's comprehensive plan should account for the zoning, uh, and the uses that are allowed in the zoning and the transportation facilities that are planned should, uh, match up with the land uses that are assumed. So when the city builds out per the plan, uh, the transportation infrastructure should be adequate for the, the zoning and the uses that are anticipated.
Okay. My next question, I guess would go to Vito, um, with regards to the site plan that he submitted where it's indicated of we have a 40% set aside with regards to undeveloped property. When I looked at, um, the proposed parking situation, the first group of housing showed 19 required and 24 provided. Working down towards the south, the next building is the Commons Building. And I believe it was proposed that uh, two were required and two were supplied. When I went to the parking drawing, I see that there are two parking spots that were not numbered. And I assume that those are in fact are the two that go to the Commons Building. I'm going to skip down to the bottom where the A-frames are and you show, um, I believe it's six buildings. You're saying that six are required and that you're providing seven. Which takes us down to the middle group. And I'm not finding a, um, indication as to exactly how much parking is provided for those structures. And so I'm curious, if you're using the 400 square foot per parking space, I think you're short.
I, I've run, I've run through the calculations numerous times with, with the city. I, to date, I am feel like I'm over parked for the requirements for the code. Um, I, I'm not sure where the, the questions are, but I'm following the, the required zoning code for parking. So currently.
Yeah, I'm, what I'm doing is I'm going to your graph where you're indicating how much square footage there is for those nine buildings. And I'm dividing it by 400 and I'm coming up with 22 to 23. And then in addition to that, I'm finding in the parking grouping that you're providing 14 additional parking spots over and above what's required.
I believe, I'd have to double check. I believe the parking is the code you refer to is 400 is for a commercial retail space. I need to double check that, but through the, through my analysis and calculations to date, the project has always been over parked by code and definition. But I'll have to look at the code really quick and verify the question you're making.
Why, why are you using 400 for, uh, 400 square foot or parking space then for the first grouping of buildings and the A-frames when in fact, uh, it's not a commercial? Well, I guess you're looking at it, you're, you're looking at it from a standpoint that it is commercial because it's a, it's a hotel?
Well, the four, the 400 code applies to an actual retail restaurant or library, and then the motel, one space to 400 feet or less, and then one and a quarter spaces per units for, for, um, other, for other units, whether it's rooms within. So that's where I'm following the code and, and overparked for the site. It's not, it's not one for 400. That would be for a retail use.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not arguing about the fact that you're, you're providing more spaces. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is the fact that I can't find, I can't find where 14 more are included in your parking layout.
Yeah. The question is where are they on the drawing? Where are they on the drawing? They're within their, the drawing dedicates and shows all the parking. I didn't list them individually, which, which ones are over, over parking, or I didn't list them specifically which ones are over what's needed, but I've allocated all the parking spaces on the site. I, I've listed them all.
Yeah, I'm, well, I guess my question is, is I'm, I'm coming up with more than 53 required for your total parking requirement. And if that in fact is the case, then that's going to encroach upon the amount of land you have available to, to donate back.
Might I suggest, I don't know, Scott Gephardt on the call, maybe he has the methodology more readily available in his mind. Um, but to your most recent point, I would just say that there's a, we have 47% open space and we would only need to provide 40%. So there is 7% more land to work with if they do need to be more parking spaces. But, I mean, Scott, is there, can you shed some light on how the parking space numbers were calculated?
It's based on, Vito was correct with, it's one for 400 square feet, an extra, I believe it's 25% for each extra bedroom. And I, I don't remember the exact calculation, Vito. You should have it there. And we've done this multiple times. Each micro cabin is one parking space. I think what, Phil, you're specifically asking how he, how he comes up with that number?
Yeah, because when I, when I look at the fact that he's providing 14 additional parking spaces in that one particular area, I mean, he's got 14 indicated there and then he's got an arrow down to a specific area on the drawing.
So maybe, maybe if the arrow goes to the wrong place, but the numbers still come out.
Well, it, it makes it terribly confusing as to try and justify the amount of space that he has available to donate, because if you, if you add additional parking, it's going to take quite a little bit of space away from what he's able to donate.
Vito, do you have the?
I can run that math more clearly, but it's to date, I've always been over, overparked on the site. So I need to review the exact area that you have been questioning.
Well, my own, my only comment is the fact that if, if it potentially could affect how much space that you have to donate, and it also could affect how many drywells you need.
Uh, that, I, that'll probably increase the drywell minimally if he has to put a couple more parking spaces in. He's already, his calculations he provided are already above what would be required for the impervious surface.
Okay. Did he, did he also include an allowance for pathways to go to each one of these buildings?
We, are you talking landscape gravel walkways or?
I don't know. I don't know whether his pathways are paved or whether they're gravel.
So when he decides, and if they're paved, then he needs more retention. There's, according to the site map, there should be enough green space to put more retention as needed.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we.
I mean, that'll be, that'll be addressed when he submits plans and, and the calculations for what he's putting in.
And, and just to be clear, if I'm, just to be clear, none of the parking spaces that I've allocated of 53 are within the dark green area that I'm showing and dedicating as the. As the open green space, so currently, none of those parking spaces are within that calculation.
Correct, I, 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 I agree with you, but where are you, if in fact, additional parking spaces are required, and I say if. Where are you going to put them?
If there needed to be more, if, and I believe I'm, again, I reiterate, I, I'm. Pretty sure that I'm meeting my expectations or exceeding them, if I needed to add more. I would add more into the native landscaping area just to the east. Of the middle section of cabins where at parking. P thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, that, that run of parking has more space that would not in, impact the open space. And would be in the native vegetation on the east of the lot below Classic. So those, if I needed more, which I don't believe I do, there's space on the property to, to allocate more profit. More parking that would not impact the forty percent open space, right now I have forty-seven percent open space. And any additional would not take away from that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Uh, go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant on the community gathering space. Uh, that they said would be used for folks that are using their facilities. Would that be available for rent to outside individuals or groups as an event space?
No, it's specifically for the guests on site, so no, it's not a community building for outside use. Weddings, events, none of that nature, it's all for onsite use, it's like a. It's just following the code set forth with hotel motel and eating and drinking establishment too. So it's a community, it's a gap, not a community, it's a gathering space for hotel guests.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, um, who have we missed? Lee?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I've got a couple of editorial comments on the staff report. Page two of the application summary. Give you a second to see that. Section A-one indicates the inclusion of an event gathering space not containing a restaurant. That's A-one. Section D-two says. The development is for a hotel complex with a restaurant. Now, as I recall, previous testimony from the applicant. And all of his. Subsequent information indicates that he's not going to have a restaurant there, so. It's one or the other, so that staff report needs to be corrected or amended.
Noted, thank you, thought we caught that.
Also in D-two, there is some incomplete language. The second sentence says the submitted plan partitioning of the property. Um, I'm not sure what the intent was there, but it's incomplete. And then the next sentence, the option is not under consideration with the current proposal. Again, the request is to development site, I assume it means develop the site.
What, where are you, Lee?
I'm sorry, this is, uh, the last comment was on D-two.
Okay.
The submitted plan partitioning of the property. Period.
Okay.
And then the. Uh, third sentence, again, the request is to development site.
The second sentence should be dropped to the development site for hotel conflicts without a restaurant.
Okay.
Too many chefs in the kitchen.
I think that means, I think what Lee's getting at is, it should say, again, the request is to develop the site, not development. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then I've got a couple of questions for the applicant. Um, the full-size plan that was prepared and distributed to the planning commission. Refers to the development, Manzanita Retreat. All the other documents, including traffic studies. Storm drainage plans, site plans, legal correspondence refer to the proposal as Manzanita Lofts. So I did, I would just ask that the applicant determine. What the official title of this development is. And note it accordingly on, on the plans.
That's fine, you're right, yeah, that was a mistake. It's Manzanita Lofts.
The Manzanita Retreat has a nice ring to it, I'm not sure what the intent was.
I'm not sure either.
And this is also to, to you, Mr. Sorelli, while the zoning ordinance contains no specific definition of open space. There is a section in the development in the C-one zone. That mentions a percentage of a lot to be devoted to usable open space, and it goes on to say, such as playgrounds. Sitting areas or picnic areas. And if you do agree and end up maintaining forty percent of the entire development as quote, open space. Do you have a sense of what that might look like, and I know you don't need to decide that now, I understand that, but I'm asking. For the audience and for the commission. What you think it might look like, and is it possible that those. Open spaces might include some impervious surfaces? The reason I mention that is that if you do have impervious, additional impervious surfaces. It might require mitigation for water runoff. In addition to what you've already proposed. So are you willing to give us an idea of what you consider that open space might look like?
Yeah, I, I, I see the open space right now as, as somewhat indicated with. Trails coming from the Highlands as well as the, I don't even know, development of the property on. Up to the south and, and west of, of the property on Classic having trails. And an open park that has natural vegetation. As far as related to impervious surfaces, I see little, maybe some, some trails, but you know, if those trails are. Done with dirt or, you know, a decomposed. Granite, like making sure that it, you know, still meets the parameters of, of water and retention onsite. Um, down at the lower section along the, the, the property, I would have. Open fields with natural vegetation, some yard games, amenities to the guests, I, there's been. Discussion about open wood fire pits, I don't plan on having this be a disruption to. The guests and having open fire pits that would have smoke, so it'd be more of a series of natural vegetation with open. Areas to gather picnic tables for lunches, kind of create like a, a state park feel, if you will, down there to tie into the surrounding context.
That's helpful, thank you. And as Savani mentioned, I understand we're not allowed to bring up additional criteria that was not part of the. Uh, not originally part of the reman. Or not, yeah, not part of the reman, is that correct, Savani?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm, uh, I'm through for the moment, thank you.
Um, Tom, did you have additional questions? Could, you need to unmute yourself, please.
You'd think by now that we'd all have learned how to do that. Another question for, for Mr. Peterson, in your. March thirty letter, we're quite. Requesting we review this on reman, you, you said on page two. Uh, the applicant is willing to reserve or dedicate forty percent of the site for open space. Or public or private park area or a golf course. And this is in order to meet the, the. Exception to the lower density requirement. But that phrasing doesn't quite track with the code. If you look at the code section. Three point oh three oh. Or A. It says. You can increase the, the density. If a area is reserved or dedicated as permanent open space. As. A public or private park area or golf course, not or. So the way I read that provision is that the open space can only be of two types. A park. Or a golf course. It can't be just any open space. So. I don't see. On your site plan. Where the park or the golf course is. And, and the ways, the reason that is, seems significant is that under. This standard, you can't just aggregate. Open spaces throughout the development. To get to forty percent, it has to be. A park or a golf course. And, and if I'm looking at the map you submitted on. May twenty-second, and, and this is in, I don't have a color printer. But it looks to me like some of the area that you are calling. The open space to be dedicated. Includes. The backside of the cabins. Are you following me here? I, what the standard is, is not. And we've been talking about forty percent of the development being open space, that's not. What's required, it's forty percent. Being open space as a park or a golf course. Where's the park?
Okay, well, it's obviously not going to be a golf course, why don't we just drop that? It strikes, I mean, I, I haven't gone back and looked at your code behind private park, but I'm gonna guess it doesn't. I would say this is, this is a private park. I mean, largely natural vegetation with perhaps a pervious trail. And a few clearings for. Playing ball or sitting at a picnic table, if it's the, it, it, you are a bit of a disadvantage if you don't have a colored site plan. Uh, the dark green area on the plan, which comprises forty-seven percent of the site is contiguous. So it's, uh, and. Probably ninety-five percent of that forty-seven percent is all clustered down at the south side of the property. Well, I guess, I mean, I, I don't disagree with your reading of the code section, but I also don't. Think we're not meeting it, I mean, it's a private park.
Including. The backside of those structures, I mean, you would consider this whole thing. A park, and keeping in mind that. A park has to be something different than just open space, because. Both terms are used in the same sentence and they're contradistinguished.
Well, I, I don't understand what you mean right there, I mean, open space can be a park. I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding where you disagree that we're not meeting the code, I mean, we're. We proposed forty-seven percent of the site, so there's a seven percent worth of wiggle room. On a contiguous area to be used as a private park. Dedicated specifically, in fact, as a private park, or maybe not dedicated, but restricted anyways. Reserved, I guess, could be the word of the. But I, and now that I think about it, maybe even the condition of approval requires a recorded dedication, which we're not opposing. So I, I guess I'm not following how we're not meeting the. Plan code as you described it.
So all of this dark green area is a park?
That's the proposal.
Okay.
Uh, okay, I have. I have a question, I guess, to follow on Tom's discussion just a moment ago about. The park. Um, you also indicate that there's a path. That you are intending to provide. So that pedestrians from both the property to the east and to property to the southwest. Would have access. On, on a path. That path ends, it looks like, at. Um, the driveway. And if that's intended to be a path for the public, I just want to confirm, it's. I, I mean, I guess you could allow the public to walk through a private park, but that your intention is. Um, that people like me that walk my dog every day. Would use that path rather than Classic, which I appreciate. Um, but that you intend people to walk through the driveway, through the center of your development. Um, and exit on. Uh, Dorcas. Is, I, I just want to understand what it is that you're proposing by this dedication. And I'm a little confused by the public and private designation. Um, if the path is intended for the public, would the public also be available to sit at a picnic table, for example? Um, or would you expect them to stay on the path and then exit? Um, and I guess. Uh, you decide who, who should answer that question.
I'll, I'll answer it, um, I'm not sure the definition of public versus private, like I assume a public park is like a. Park that is owned and operated by the city, being private would be owned and operated by the hotel, but. Um, after, you know, being in the area and visiting the site, it seems like people use the. That path from the Highlands as well as to the southwest community, to instead of walking down Classic, I do see that there's. A foot traffic path down from up above through the property, so the intent with that trail is. What you mentioned, Karen, where it would be available to walk through the grounds and use. Use that as a means to get to. The intersection of Classic and Dorcas and then down to Lenida and downtown Manzanita. In a, in a safe, in a safe manner. So.
Thank you, I appreciate that, um, would you intend to extend that path along the edge of the paved area so that you don't have. People walking through the middle of your parking lot?
Yeah, it would be, it, it should and would be connected through, yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, Frank, did you have another question?
Yeah, just as a follow-up to what you were discussing, if those are public trails, would you designate that park area. Hotel guests use only? To prevent a group of twenty people coming down to have a celebration of some sorts in that park?
I mean, I would. I don't, I would defer to the city on, on that, I, I think. I would be open to having it available and, you know, I, there's, there's an extent where you, you'd want to make sure that the grounds are safe for both. Public people visiting the property as well as private guests and residents. With, you know, hours of operation and when, when that would be used, but. I don't see it as being signed and. Do not enter trespassing, I would keep it more open and tied to the communities around, so. Not, not posted, no use.
No, that wouldn't prevent anybody from having, uh, some sort of reception there then, which we talked about earlier. About the community gathering space being used only for hotel residents, do you see what I mean? Because if that's, and I appreciate your openness about it, but it may be a problem, I just can't walk onto a hotel space. And decide that I want my neighbors and I to have a gathering, so.
It's not, it's not going to be publicly dedicated in the sense that the city will own it and. It, you know, it's still going to be privately owned, so if there's activity taking place on private property that the owner doesn't want it to have take, take place there. Then the owner is within his rights to. To chase them out.
No, I understand that.
I think what Mr. Sorelli is saying is that. We're gonna, we don't have a strong, he doesn't have a strong opinion either way, he wants to do it in whatever way is most, fits best with the city's vision. Right, if you want a truly public. Space that maximum public access, I'm sure he's willing to talk about that, if he wanted to be more restrictive so as to avoid these events. Then we'll do that too, uh, you know, I think it's a, it's a dialogue to be had. Over how to best use the space in a way that serves both the private business and the public need.
I understand, but I'm just saying it would need to be determined one way or the other, so, okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commission to any of the participants so far? Okay, um, let me check my notes, make sure that we're following. Okay, let me check my notes, make sure that we're following our procedure. Sorry, give me one second. Okay. We are now at the point where we would invite persons in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the proposed development. And I would ask again that you restrict your questions to the items that are open. That, and I'm just gonna use shorthand here, generally speaking, about harmony with the rest of the development or with the rest of the neighborhood drainage, density and traffic. Scott, would you let us know if anyone raises a hand?
I've got a couple of people.
Okay.
Bill Gump, you are first. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm talking about the 40%. You show that you've got 79,042 square feet set aside for this part, which is 47%. If you do the calculation, the big area where you have the, I'm not sure what they're called, but it's a squared area. There's 46,576 square feet there. Then you add in another 6,250 square feet for an area that is 635 feet long, 10 feet wide, which is a setback. How can a setback be part of a park? That setback is part of every house built in Manzanita. They all have setbacks. I disagree with that. If you look at the long strip of land, it's hard to calculate exactly what it is. But I, based on the map on page eight, I come up with 635 feet. And at the widest point at the, which would be at the northern end of that strip, it's, I estimated 64 feet wide, narrowing down to zero where it intersects with Ridge Road and Classic Street. So if you take a third of that, which is 22 feet, and you multiply it by 635, you come up with another 13,907. You add that to your 46,576, you get a total of 60,446. 19,000 square feet less than you got figured on your map. I'm trying to figure out how you come up with 79,000. And by the way, 40% is 66,000 square feet needed. So I don't see that you've met the 40% based on the map that you submitted, which is in part of the packet. I would also like to discuss harmony. The area around the planned development should be in substantial harmony with the proposed plan. I think the proposed plan should be in harmony with the rest of the development. There's not a hotel within four blocks of this project. It's all single family homes. Where would you have them put a hotel within that, within the SRR? In relation to the 40% again, how did you come up with 49 dwelling units? When you multiply 2.3 acres, which is 60% of the land, times 13, you get 29.9 dwellings. How do you get to take the full 3.83 acres and multiply it by 13? I think you've done your math wrong, or else I really don't understand it. But it doesn't make sense if you do it both ways. I give you back my time.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the applicant to please make notes and address all of these concerns. You'll have plenty of time to address these concerns at the end of public testimony.
Yeah, we fully intend to rebuttal comments as appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Our, and really the question was for persons in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the proposal. Sorry. My timer just, I'm sorry.
Karen, I have no hands up for that.
Okay.
I didn't realize you had one.
Okay.
Sorry, Karen, Bill was not muted, so I've taken care of that. Go ahead.
Okay, so there are no persons who wish to speak in favor of the proposed development?
Only if Patty is in favor, but I think, no, she's not. Okay, go ahead and ask for people in opposition.
Okay, then that's, thank you, that's next. Are there comments from the public in opposition to the items under discussion today?
I have an opposition, can I speak?
No, I'm calling them in order, so go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have a little hand on my old iPad. My wife's old iPads, I'll wait, thank you.
Okay, hold on. You, you don't have a way to raise your hand?
No, I'll just do this way.
Why don't you go ahead and speak first then?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm using my wife's old iPad here. I'm at Classic and Dorcas right now. And we're a co-owner here on this corner. And you hear noise in the background, it is the city working on Dorcas at this very time. My concerns revolve, well, first, my background is in commercial real estate. I'm retired from commercial real estate, work projects such as the Cruz Woods project in Portland, and so very familiar with the planning process. The one thing that struck me here is during my commercial real estate career, I've never seen a city adopt what amounts to a five-way intersection. Right here, when they put the driveway in at Dorcas and Classic, you create what is a five-way intersection. If you were to take all the houses from Manzanita City Park at Pacific Lane to Treasure Cove and between Carmel Drive and Third, and take them and put them out on a driveway on Carmel Drive that is 15 feet from the corner of Treasure Cove and Carmel, that is the same effect as the hotel entering this intersection here at Classic and Dorcas. I don't think the city would plan a five-way intersection, but they're responding with a five-way intersection plan. One thing that was brought up in testimony today is the streets need to be adequate to support anticipated traffic, anticipated. And as shown by the questions that Phil Mann asked, that the planners did not anticipate the full development of the hillside development and that is adjacent here, the Highland Development and its impact upon this area. I would suggest that rather than have the traffic come to a five-way intersection, there perhaps it would be better that the developer develop a four-way intersection at Seaview Drive across from the Highlands Development and that the city support that intersection. That would slow traffic on Classic. It would allow people probably to still walk on Classic like they do today. If not, it would at least allow a four-way intersection that would slow driving along Classic and would provide access from both sides at that location for all future development and all future density, not just the ones that the traffic engineers took into account just from this development, though the code says adequate to support anticipated traffic. And they narrowed that to just what's currently on the books, not the hillsides of development that will come down to Classic. With that said, I will also say that usually and customarily, I've seen the plans have all of the setbacks and open space and so forth early in the process. So the questioning that this developer is receiving is not as intense. It's already proven. So I would argue for a transparent overall traffic philosophy that looks at intersections and adapts them to meet the needs of the entire area as it says, the streets outside the planned area. And with that, I'll give any other time to somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have any other hands raised? Lee, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, Karen, the last gentleman that spoke, a member of the public. I don't believe he gave his name for the record.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm using, and I'm using my wife's iPad too. It's Gordon, G O R D O N King, K I N G. And I also submitted some written testimony on the 25th.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Lee.
Thanks, Lee.
Any other hands raised, Scott?
My name's Patty Walker, can you hear me?
Yes.
My hand is raised and he asked me to unmute, so I'm not sure if you want me to speak now.
Yes, we do, thank you.
My name's Patty Walker, my husband Pat Barrett. We live at 758 Dorcas Lane in Manzanita. And I'm gonna make several comments and I, I don't especially need an answer right away. The, the applicant has characterized himself as a local person who is familiar with coastal communities and is actually a resident. And my question is, as a neighbor, he has heard quite a bit, I think, over the course of months from his neighbors. And in my experience with him in a personal conversation and in public conversation, I don't believe he has listened to community concerns and incorporated them into his application. And I think he will say that he has. I would just make one comment on the, the current applicant, the current accommodation of 40%. I don't know if he knows that when he bought that property, but we've watched for the last six years as that's been a dumping ground for not just compostable materials, but cement and paving material. And that essentially is a dump that he is dealing to this 40%. And I would encourage the planning commission to take a look at that, that piece of property before you accept that as a 40% open space. I also think it's very nice that he's accommodating the Highlands and people to the west. But we walk all the time from Dorcas down Classic across Dorcas up to the, to the grocery store. And I would like to know how he's going to accommodate my ability to get across the five-way stop sign there. I would say the traffic reports are very accurate, certain, from where they come from. But from a person on the ground, there is a lot more traffic than they've come up with. There will be a lot more traffic as the Highland continues. Part of the Highlands development is in the city, part of it is in the county.
Okay, thank you for that testimony. Scott, do we have any other hands raised?
Yes, next we have Russell. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So I have a home in Classic Cottages on Jackson Way. And I've been in Manzanita since 2012 now. With regard to the traffic situation and the density, the traffic at that intersection, I, I think what we're also missing is the pedestrian and cyclist traffic that occurs very frequently at that intersection at Classic and Dorcas. You know, quite frankly, I haven't seen the, the traffic studies that have been done. But when you're proposing, it's my understanding that there are currently 32 homes on Dorcas. And this proposal would more than double that. And in addition, you've got the Highlands. To say that the anticipated traffic with this development isn't, is basically non-existent or nominal to that intersection just really flies in the face of common sense. I mean, you're more than doubling what is there currently. And in addition, because of the nature of the transient situation at a hotel, those people are coming and going actually more frequently than people who live there. So I don't think this development would be harmonious in any event. In addition, as a personal injury attorney, I can guarantee you that the city, if they approve this, is inviting litigation whenever there's going to be an auto accident, a pedestrian accident, a golf ball, a straight golf ball accident at this private development. So that's a whole hornet's nest that the city is going to be looking at if they approve this. The one question I do have for the applicant would be, because it was my understanding early on that this development actually wasn't going to be staffed 24/7. And so I'm curious if there's information out there that this hotel, which, you know, I know we're calling it a hotel, but because they're these individual units, it's, it's really unlike what we're normally think of a hotel. If there isn't somebody on site 24/7 to deal with problems, because I can guarantee you, if you've got a development this large with 32 units, there's going to be problems. If there isn't somebody on site to deal with that, it's going to be a real headache for all of those around that development. So I would hope that the planning commission understands that this is not a proposal that is within the harmony of the development, of developments that are already around it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Micah.
You wanna, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm just unmuting myself. One moment.
We can hear you.
Great. Hi, my name's Mika Russo and I'm a recent resident of Manzanita. My partner Sean and our cat Margot, and I moved from busy intersection in southeast Portland to Manzanita last year. So this is a proposal that came up around the time that we moved from the city to Manzanita. I'm in my early 30s and I work remotely for Nikki in the trail running department. We're renting a home in the Classic Street cottages from whom some of the neighbors we've heard from today. We hope to get away from traffic and the chaos of the city to be closer to nature and to be part of a community and to get to know our neighbors. And so far, we've been very lucky to experience all those things here. For the planning committee, I would like to address three specific areas of concern I have, including traffic density and the substantial harmony of the surrounding areas in conflict with the Manzanita lost plan. When we were moving in last year, Sean and I heard about this 34-unit proposal in the small plot of green space just across the street from our community and adjacent to the golf course. The concept honestly seemed impossible to us because as I went on my daily runs on Classic Street to the Halen Bay State Park, I seriously considered the infrastructure necessary to achieve such a proposal. I'd run past the thick plants and tall trees lining the golf course and imagine a parking lot. I'd look down the steep hillsides and see deer and elk take refuge in the gully below, trying to picture 34 units of housing in a community building in its place. While I tried my best to imagine it, I couldn't grasp how such a place could be built without deeply impacting the neighborhood and the residents around it. It raised my concern regarding the density of such a proposal and the great reduction of open space in the area. I'm not sure if I'm able, like I'm allowed to share my screen, but I do have materials that I can describe. And if I'm allowed to share my screen, I'd love to show them. Before I go further, it, I don't know, can you guys answer and let me know? Can I share a resource?
I'm not sure that we can, but I also want to let you know that you have about a minute left in your presentation.
Then I'll just describe my experience. Specifically around traffic, I'd be running on the shoulder of Classic Street towards Dorcas and large vehicles like a camper headed to the state park would come through the intersection and move into the opposite lane to accommodate me to give space. At the same time, another vehicle would be coming towards the intersection from the south behind me and there'd be a scramble between the two cars to get into their appropriate lanes. I've seen the same thing happen up and down Classic Street with people walking their dogs and their friends, walking with their kids, biking. The road is already busy with vehicles and bicycles, pedestrians, and without sidewalks for safe travel, the additional cars and people coming from the 34-unit hotel would be drastically impacting the traffic in it. would be drastically impacting the traffic in the area of safety. And I just want to emphasize the point that was made before, that that wasn't taken into account when discussed the increase of a number of trips that would be made. And I wanted to also acknowledge as someone who works in a trail running capacity, I've also volunteered with trail maintenance crews in the area that the lack of planning and concrete illustration of what those public and private trails would look like doesn't constitute as a trail that would be accessible and would reduce the safety concerns that the neighbors would have. I realize I probably at time, I have a lot more to say, but I'll yield the time back to everybody else on the call.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Karen, next we have Sandy Wood.
Am I unmuted?
You are, but before you speak, I'm going to ask Mika to please stop your video. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
My name is Sandy Wood. I live at 120 Beastwax Lane. Thank you for allowing the public to testify. And I do agree with most of those who have spoken before me. Do ask that the record will remain open for the 14 days. Also ask that the Orca attorney who defended the case before Luba be allowed to assist with the writing of the findings so they're well-written and defensible. Many have already submitted letters, including me. I hope you've received them and are considering them along with the testimony this morning, as well as the testimony heard last year on the subject. Substantial harmony with the standard as required by MCO 4.136-3C2 requires there must be actual reports and designs now detailing the plans, including water sewer, roads, traffic, electricity, stormwater, geological hazards, dune stability, in order for all of you to review the facts and base your decision. In regards to this, the applicant does not meet the burden of proof. Development standards must be reviewed by the hearing process, not after the development is on its way to construction. Complete plan is still unavailable a year after this process started. The planning commission must apply the 6.5 dwellings per acre density standard. He claims he'll have 40% open space. Where is the proof? And it can't be the gully with all the blackberries. That's not a walking path. The trees surrounding the golf course need to be retained. Their beauty is part of the golf course and removing them is definitely not in substantial harmony. The surrounding neighborhoods have voted not to allow STRs. Placing a 34-unit hotel in the neighborhood is definitely not in substantial harmony. The hotel is, in reality, 34 dwelling units, complete with a gathering center, an endless party space without supervision, keyless entry, where the neighbors have voted no to any STRs. A dwelling unit with no staff and keyless entry and part of a 34-unit complex is still a short-term rental complex. The neighborhood is filled with full-time and part-time residents. It is not a commercial zone. It is where the residents' livability and jeopardy. Manzanita zoning ordinance 4.136-3C3 is not followed. The planning commission is representing our city, not the wishes of a developer. The project is not in substantial harmony and you must do your diligence on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Karen, now next we have Barbara. Barbara, you can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Barbara Lee. I live on Dorcas Lane and thank you for letting me speak. Traffic. In the remand statement, both petitioners and opponents' traffic engineer estimated that the project would generate up to 309 vehicle trips on the peak day, a Saturday in the summer. Evidence that a project would generate up to 309 trips does not establish that a project would generate more than 309 trips. However, in my mind, up to 309 additional cars along with the amount of traffic on Classic and Dorcas means considerable traffic for this intersection, possibly a 50% or more increase. There's no infrastructure to support such an increase. Pedestrians, bicyclists, and dog walkers use Classic and Dorcas regularly. Their safety would be severely compromised by this project. On the weekend of May 12th through 14th, I spent 11 hours counting traffic, pedestrians, pedestrians walking dogs, bikes, motorhomes, golf carts on Classic Street. I counted whether they were going north or south on Classic. Not sure it mattered which direction they were traveling. It was traffic. And in my mind, a lot of traffic for a proposed five-way stop. We're talking traffic on Classic only. Traffic on Dorcas is limited to local traffic only at this time because of the ongoing street project. When the project on Dorcas is completed, pedestrians will use Dorcas to walk to town, whether to access the beach or just to avoid busy Lenada, especially in the summer. It should also be noted, there are no sidewalks on either Classic or Dorcas. Cars will take Dorcas to avoid Lenada as there is only one stop sign on Dorcas. Many people stopped to ask what I was doing. When I explained the traffic situation with the proposed project, they were not aware the entrance and exit of the Lofts project would be 56 feet from the current stop sign on Dorcas. I measured. A number of people thought the entrance and exit would be farther down Erickson. They felt this would make a dangerous situation for the intersection of Classic and Dorcas. No one I spoke with was in favor of this proposed project in an established residential neighborhood. My husband would like, we're sharing a computer and he would also like to speak.
My name is Paul Hughes. I live on Dorcas Lane. Thank you for letting me speak. A potentially deadly situation could be created over something as simple as a golf ball. I'm talking about if the city approves a hotel in a location frequently hit with 130 to 180 mile-per-hour golf balls. I've golfed at the course in Manzanita for over 20 years. Long ago, I lost count of the rounds I played there. Despite golf schools, golf magazine articles, advice from my fellow golfers, and best intentions, like many others, I still frequently slice the golf ball to the right. At times, it turns out okay, but can possibly be disastrous to anything in the way of 130 to 180 mile-per-hour golf balls. Unfortunately, many golfers who play Manzalilla Links also slice. That brings me to my point. A 34-unit hotel is proposed adjacent to the signature fifth hole. If built in that location, it will be in direct line for frequent, potentially lethal golf balls. Manzanita ordinance 4.136.3(c) states, quote, "The area around the development can be planned to be in substantial harmony with the proposed plan," unquote. Given the hazards of putting a hotel next to the fifth hole and the city's liability of knowingly doing so, this does not meet the standard of substantial harmony. If the city approves this project while knowing the location is inherently dangerous, the city could be liable. So I suggest you listen to this golfer and concerned citizen. Deny this project.
Thank you.
I've got three more hands up, Karen.
Okay, and I would suggest that if the three additional people that wish to speak have already submitted their comments in writing, we have them and I will acknowledge all of them as part of the record in just a minute. But if there are additional information or they have not already submitted testimony, let's go ahead and hear from them.
Okay, Rob and Sharon, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Rob Wardford and local citizen, live on Laurel Avenue, but am very familiar with the area. And I just wanted to tag on to something that Commissioner Chris mentioned. And it's actually something I believe that I brought up in earlier testimony to the commission. And it has to do about with the term hotel. And I liked how, if I interpreted correctly, and I don't want to speak for Commissioner Chris, he rather decoupled the term hotel from ORS standards, 699.005, which is actually more to do with limitations on innkeepers and safekeeping of baggage and so on. This is really not a hotel in the semantic sense or, you know, sort of parallel to common law. When I stay in a hotel, I want a place that is secure and that's what I expect. I expect that someone will be on duty. What's going to happen, and earlier Russell Hampf also mentioned it, is we're going to have a security problem. And we have only four police and at night, those police are, for the most part, off except on holidays, I believe. So that means that if there's something that needs to be addressed, policemen will be called in from off-duty. So it is going to be a problem if there is no employee on site. And so in the definition of a hotel, I think that Manzanita, in writing the ordinance 3.030302H in mentioning hotel or motel, certainly meant it in the way that we all understand hotels. If we're going to stay somewhere and it's a hotel, not a condominium that's for rent with 30 others in the same building, we want some security. And if there's no security there, Manzanita is going to be overburdened. And certainly with the automated system that I think that I understand, they're going to be checking in people. They don't know who they are. There are probably going to be more people per room, et cetera, et cetera. So in that basic term of hotel, I think that even though we're at this stage, that it does bear some examination as to the semantic use of hotel. And the fact is, this is just stacked STRs. So anyway, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Rob, anybody else? Scott, do we have anybody else that wanted to speak?
Next we have Sean. Sean, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you.
Yes, hi. My name's Sean. As my partner Mika Russo spoke, she and I lived in the Classic Street neighborhoods with our cat Margot. I want to keep my answer to the point. I'm looking at the updated site plan that's available on the city of Manzanita website that was posted on May 27th, or at least it's seen here that was drawn on May 18th, 2023. And I just can't help, I myself am an avid trail runner. I run this road almost every day. I run Niaconny, the local mountain, every week. And I have to say bluntly, I'm offended by the use of the word trail as a means of just drawing a two-dimensional line on two-dimensional space and having the public accept that as something that is desirable as an outdoor green space. The reality is that trails are not just lines that you draw. Trails are serious means of transport that require serious understanding of the landscape. Nonprofits work extensively to ensure that those that walk on trails, members of our community, whether they're visiting from, say, out of the city, older members of our community, feel safe on a trail. I wouldn't want my mother, when visiting, to be anywhere near that landscape unless it was done with serious intention. What I'm really getting after is that that gully is so steep, it would require switchbacks, it would require more than, I made a note earlier, what Vito said. He said it was going to be state park-like and that maybe there would be some compostable things on the ground. It's more serious than that. With the water running off the landscape there, you'd need some serious rocks built in. And that's all just to say that I'm a bit flabbergasted that there hasn't been higher expectations of the landscape architecture of this site plan, a three-dimensional understanding that these strips of green, that is not usable outdoor space. I couldn't sit there, have a picnic. I wouldn't want to walk down it. And it flies in the face of common sense that that's usable and should be included in the 47% that the applicant is suggesting that the public can take full advantage of. And the last point I'll make is, I don't know, I find myself going, why would I want to walk down a trail that apparently is for me and then walk through a private development and walk past all of these driveways and that's a courtesy for me? I don't know. That seems not to fall under what I understand trails to be. Last I checked, when I walked through Niaconny, when I walked through Nahalem Bay State Park, I enter a trail and I leave a trail end to end in a public space. I don't walk through private developments. And so for this to be seen as something that I, a resident of Manzanita, would benefit from walking past all of these private developments, it feels a bit like a dead end. And I would urge the city council to vote no. Thank you.
Yvanna, you're next. You can unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Yvanna Ovino. I live in Classic Street cottages, so I will be opposite this development. A friend was once told the adage, "Pigs get fed, hogs get slaughtered", when she kept asking for more and more pay for a job she was doing. And to me, this is the crux of our problem here. We are talking about scale. Why such a big hotel complex in a quiet residential area of single-family homes? The developer's lawyer wrote, quote, "An outright permitted use under the zoning cannot logically be in harmonious with the surrounding area," close quote. I beg to differ. Harmony, as defined by Merriam-Webster, is the quality of forming a pleasing and consistent whole, agreement, accord, tranquility, internal calm. To construct a 34-unit hotel complex, the largest in Manzanita history, in a 100% residential area is not in substantial harmony with the surrounding area. To take down large second-growth fir and pine trees, ruining the beauty of the signature fifth hole of Manzanita Links is not in substantial harmony with the surrounding area. To take down this natural barrier of trees, thus exposing passerbys, cars, and kids, two-errant golf balls, and million-dollar lawsuits is not in substantial harmony with the area. I disagree with Mr. Peterson saying that this issue has no legs. I refer you to McGuire versus New Orleans City Park. versus New Orleans City Park, Gleason versus Hillcrest Golf Course, Sierra Screw Products versus Azusa Greens. To add traffic, noise, congestion, and smoke to a quiet neighborhood of full and part-time residents, whose HOAs have voted not to allow short-term rentals so we all know our neighbors, is not in substantial harmony with the area. To have an unmanned hotel where the residents in the surrounding community have to call the police for immediate problems is unfair to our police and is not in substantial harmony with the area. Over 135 residents have signed letters and spoken up against placing a large hotel at this location. Hotels may be permitted outright use in the SRR zone, but Manzanita ordinance says that other than density, the SRR zone shall conform to those established in the R3 zone, and that the planning commission shall determine whether the development is in substantial harmony with the area. The planning commission must determine that the largest hotel in Manzanita history placed in a purely residential area and by the signature fifth hole, while permitted in the small wooded area zoned SRR, is not in substantial harmony with the surrounding area and should not be allowed to be built as proposed. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like I have one more hand, Karen. Brian, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and for having a public open discussion. I really appreciate that. Three things. I'm confused about today's interpretation of that concept of planned development is not in substantial harmony with the surrounding area. The applicant's attorney basically indicated that we're reading that backwards. And I would like the planning commission to look at that language and come up with an interpretation, or, you know, state how they're going to interpret this language. I'm in favor of everyone who has spoken today previous to this. It's interesting, if you step back, I think it's interesting that I haven't heard anyone say, yes, this is something that Manzanita needs or improves the quality of life for its residents. I haven't heard anyone say that. And so I would like the planning commission to take that into consideration. And lastly, if the planning commission does approve the project, I'd like them to be aware that local residents are very sensitive to tree removal, ground vibration from soil compaction, hours of construction noise, et cetera. If this is approved, I certainly hope that you will carefully monitor the construction activity. Thank you.
And Karen, that was the last hand I had raised.
Okay, thank you. I would like to provide an opportunity for the applicant to respond to any of these points raised by members of the public. Oh, before I do, let me just, I'm sorry, I don't mean to jump into your time, but I do want to acknowledge and make sure that these letters become part of the record. We've received letters from Mark Beach, Janet Carter, Yvanna Ovino, Denise Lofman, Russell Hance, Mark Bellary, excuse me if I'm butchering your name, Sandy Wood, Parker Blozer, Paul A. Hughes, and Laura Willingham Mine. And in addition, we received a letter this morning from Sean Malone.
Karen?
Yes, sir?
Just for the record, I will send you, we have a spreadsheet with everybody that we've included comments for.
Okay, I just, thank you. I appreciate that. That will be part of the record as well?
Correct.
Thank you, Scott. Okay. Go ahead, Vito, if you wish.
Yeah, David Peterson again for the applicant. Just a few things to try to respond to comments in a number of different directions. I have confidence that the planning commission here knows its own city well, and knows that a lot of the factual statements that are being made are in fact not correct. This is not going to be the largest hotel in Manzanita. It's not a neighborhood of entirely detached housing. There's attached housing directly to the north. The site plan makes quite clear that there's not going to be wholesale removal of trees. A number of the issues that were raised in public comment, I essentially already pre-rebutted in my opening remarks by talking about things like golf ball liability and similar issues as that. I'm not going to spend more time doing that again. So I do want to touch on a number of issues that come more from the staff report and the commissioner's questions earlier. The applicant will accept the changes to conditions B, D, and E proposed by Ms. Hamon, so that's good progress there. With respect to the idea of onsite security, if the commission thinks it's important, Mr. Sorelli is willing to accept a condition that would require some sort of onsite security or management presence. His complete intention here is to run this like any other hotel, where you're going to have access to the equivalent of front desk staff and housekeeping staff for your hotel need. On the question of the applicability of the density standard, as you know, our primary contention is and always has been that density standard doesn't apply because these are not dwelling units. That said, we recommend staff's first option in the staff report, which is to accept the open space dedication that Mr. Sorelli is offering without deciding the dwelling unit question, specifically the question of whether hotel rooms are dwelling units. We think that's the path to the most, you know, the best decision and also the maximum benefit to the city that it can receive from the use of this open space. And also to that question of open space, I would encourage the planning commission to look at the site plan for the Classic Street cottages. That development used this same 40% open space dedication tool to increase density. And you'll see that the open space there that counted towards the 40%, it consists of interspersed columns and perimeter open space, more fragmented than the open space that we're proposing for this site. That said, I want to emphasize what I said in my conversation with Mr. Squillo, that, you know, the applicant is flexible here and is willing to work with the city on whatever they may ask, you know, within reasonable bounds, of course, to make sure that the open space serves a dual benefit to both the private hotel and the general public in a way that minimizes adverse impacts and maximizes public benefits. That's certainly a conversation that can be had once the open space exists, to make sure that it's used in a way that is beneficial for all. With respect to holding the record open after this hearing, I reiterate our objection to that. There was plenty of opportunity to submit any evidence that any party wanted in advance of this hearing. The notice was clear about that. There's no suggestion that anybody has somehow been prohibited or restricted in submitting evidence by this hearing. Orca has asked for 14 days to submit its traffic rebuttal. There's been no suggestion that they couldn't have done that before this hearing. Their traffic engineer was on, you know, he spoke earlier, and he had the opportunity to present whatever argument he wanted. Our traffic study has been in the record since May 4th. That's 26 days ago, plenty of time. There's no point to belabor this record further. You have all the evidence you need going back to last March to be able to evaluate these criteria. To the question that Commissioner Chris asked of me, I'm going to concede that we did not raise the dedication issue prior to the Lubbock case, but that was a mistake on my part. I did get Mr. Malone's letter this morning and had to come up with some responses to that. So, you know, I don't think the argument that he's made has been waived, so I'm going to withdraw that objection. But as I mentioned many times, our primary argument here is that hotel rooms are not dwelling units. And then lastly, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Aaron to my right here, and he's going to talk about some of the traffic issues that have come up in testimony.
Thanks again for the record, Brent Aaron, traffic engineer with Mackenzie. So I want to address a few of the questions and comments that came up, both from the planning commission members and from the public. So first off, the traffic study that we prepared was in compliance with the scoping letter that the city's consultant provided to us. And that consultant agreed with the findings of limited impact, and that in accordance with the code, the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic, and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area. So as far as the number of trips, just to correct the record, the traffic study and the city's consultant agreed with this, 274 trips on a Saturday. That's fewer than 12 trips per hour, and 94 weekday trips, which is only four per hour on weekdays. And then for the peak hour, there's less than one trip every two minutes during even the busiest hour of the summer. So keep that in mind, less than one trip every two minutes is what the impact is. As far as the frontage improvements, the city has not required frontage improvements with this application, and that includes any pedestrian or bike facilities. And generally, the city has not required such improvements, nor have been made in accordance with the standards that have been referenced. So I would note also that the Dorcas improvements that are currently underway don't include any bike or pedestrian facilities either. So the applicant has offered to provide public use of the onsite pathway that's been offered, which would allow people to walk parallel to Classic between essentially the Highlands Access and Dorcas. And there have been some comments in the record from the public that talk about how high traffic volumes are, but they don't provide any specific numbers of vehicles or pets. The only information is what we provided in the record, and the city's consultant agrees with the volumes and the analysis that we prepared. So as far as the access, generally, access would be provided to a lower classification street, which in this case is Dorcas. And that frontage is short, but we've maximized the distance from the intersection with Classic Street. It doesn't create a five-legged intersection or a five-way stop, like some people have said. There's a separate driveway, and we've noted, and the city's consultant agrees with this, that there won't be any issues with operation queuing for sightlines. We can provide adequate sightlines for all the stop approaches at the intersection, and also for approaching vehicles from the west on Dorcas. And that was all I had to add. I will address all those questions and comments.
We'd be happy to answer any other questions, otherwise that would...
I like it. Again, thanks for today. I just want to follow up that, you know, there's been a lot of effort and emphasis to provide documentation and findings for the site related to the wetlands that has been done, the stormwater management, the traffic engineering. You know, I guess my biased opinion is I think I've spent a lot of energy and effort to design this project to meet and exceed the context of the site in a way that is, it is a hotel, but it fits a character of Manzanita. Again, I've grown up here, I've seen this area evolve over the years, and I've put a lot of emphasis to try to respond to that and ensure that it is a good project for the community, as well as, again, my intent is for it to run well for people staying at the site as well as for the community itself. So, you know, full intentions to have this be a success for everyone in the context and surrounding area. So, thank you.
Okay. It is 12:46, according to my clock. We've gone over the time allotted considerably. I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute break. Before I do that, I want to go ahead and close the public comment portion of this discussion. And after a brief break, we'll come back and invite discussion among the commissioners. We'll still be able to direct clarifying questions to anyone who's testified today, but we'll be at the point where the discussion will be limited really to commission members. But let's see, now it's 12:47. Why don't we take a 10-minute break? We'll be back at 3 minutes to 1, give everybody a chance to stretch a little bit, clear your mind if you need it, and then we'll come right back. Clear your mind if you need it, and then we'll come right back. Okay, is everybody important back on the call?
And those of us not important are back.
Oh, no. I don't see Vito's video yet, so I'm going to wait.
This is the applicant, we're back.
Okay, there you are.
Want to stay on video?
Yes, if you don't mind. I imagine that there may be some clarifying questions that come your way. And city staff is back, is that correct?
I'm back Karen, oh, Leila's back too.
Okay. Okay, and am I missing anybody? Okay. Let us proceed at this point. Again, we're primarily having a discussion among the commission members who may ask clarifying questions. But we are at the point where the discussion will be limited pretty much to commission members. And no new testimony will be taken at this time. We're going to have a discussion based on what's in the record already. All right, who wants to go first? Go ahead, Lee.
Thank you Karen. This is directed at Mr. Sorelli. You know that the concern about the operation being keyless and not having anyone on site has been a bone of contention now for almost a year. I think that it's been brought up at every planning commission meeting. And if I heard correctly, your counsel just alluded to the fact that you were willing to provide some kind of onsite management. Now, we can't require you to do that. But I would really appreciate it if you would go on the record and state what your vision of that might be.
Yeah, I fully intend to have the project run for successful in the neighborhood and business. I would have management available onsite from before check-in till late into the evening with 24/7, 24 hours, seven days a week. Calls to a local manager in Manzanita that would be available to assist with issues. If there's any concerns, if things change and become a problem, I would have it 24/7, 24 hours a day and just have a whole staff. I've reached out to every single hotel in Manzanita. It seems like each one operates within this manner. They have onsite chipper check-in through checkout and a couple hours before and after on either side. And so I would follow suit with most of the hotels in town. I'm sorry, here we...
Oh, I was just going to say that this is really music to my ears. Again, as you know, you've been reluctant to offer that to the city, to the community in the past. While that doesn't solve a lot of issues for a lot of people, it does provide a level of comfort that wasn't there before. And the fact that you were willing to say it on the record is critical. So I thank you for whatever turned your brain, whatever turned your mind. I'm happy that you were willing to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tom, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, I had a question about traffic. Mr. Nice in his report last year, and then again in his testimony today, mentioned that the city has some plan for widening Classic Street to accommodate cyclists and pedestrians. And he also mentions that it's common when you have an adjacent development to require the developer to improve the roadway when it's planned and required like that. So, and yet when I read the McKenzie Report, it says no such improvements have been proposed. So I'm kind of confused about that. What, why? One, my question is, why didn't the city propose that? And two, if this development goes forward, would the city later be precluded from widening Classic to make it more amenable to pedestrians and bicyclists? And I don't know who to direct that to, anyone who can answer is fine.
Yeah, I can answer, this is Brent Aaron. So I think what Mr. Nice was saying is that the city's standard for Classic Street does include sidewalk on the bike facilities. That's in the planning documents, right? But the city, like I testified earlier, the city doesn't, didn't require it for this project. And I'm not aware of any plans that the city has to install any improvements along Classic Street at this time.
So, well, then why didn't the city do that if they were able to? And then my second question is, can we do it later? Or would this development, if allowed, prohibit the widening?
It does not. There's currently approximately 40 feet of right-of-way along Classic Street, which allows the city to add a pathway in the future if they choose to do that.
So we have, I can add to that too, Tom. The city has a downtown transportation plan, which includes redoing Classic Street to be a multimodal street. We would need to do that within existing right-of-way or coordinate easements with adjacent property owners. Our current code doesn't require frontage improvements. So someone did allude to the fact that when Classic Street was, cottages were developed, they were not required to do frontage improvements. So the development of the site wouldn't necessarily preclude us from doing that project because it does slope off to the western side of the right-of-way. So we would need to work within the 40 feet that we have unless we're able to work some sort of easement opportunity on the eastern side where there is still also topography issues. So that project is included in the city's capital improvement plan to begin study next year of the right-of-way to do actual survey work and to determine what can be built within that right-of-way.
Anything further, Tom?
No.
Okay, are there any other questioners from other commissioners? I'd like to clarify something in the staff report. It's on page one, under the background, item number C. I think there's a math error. It says that there's a total of 3.81 acres, and I believe it should be 3.83. If I'm incorrect, I just want to make sure that we're all using the same number.
That's noted Karen.
Thank you, okay. Then I would like to take a look at each of those four elements. And let's come to some determination. And I don't know what order. I guess we'll just follow the staff report. The issues on remand. And I'm looking at the, I think the density standard first on page five of the staff report. It's item B under heading four. And if I'm reading this correctly, the city either needs to determine that the development will include dwelling units, in which case the standard density requirements apply. Or it looks like we have an alternative interpretation that we don't necessarily need to determine whether they're dwelling units or not, but because the applicant is proposing 40% or more dedication to a public or private park or golf course, that we don't necessarily need to make a determination on dwelling units and agree that the development would meet that standard if it was required. It just, did the way I state that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, and our, what's the commissions? Let's take the temperature of the commission. How do you feel about how we approach this particular remand issue? And I'd invite you all to unmute yourselves and speak freely.
This is Tom, I'll start it off. The way this is presented is a little weird because usually a court or other tribunal doesn't decide questions that it doesn't have to. You don't give advisory opinions to hypothetical questions. So it seemed to me coming into this hearing that the applicant had basically conceded that the density standard would apply and said, "I will meet it." And so we shouldn't have to figure out whether it does apply, meaning that these are not dwelling units. And we could just consider whether, go straight to the proposal. Well, does the current site plan with the dedication it described, does that meet the standard, yes or no? And not address the dwelling unit issue at all?
And is that your recommendation or your suggestion?
Well, I just want to make clear that in my thinking on that, that I don't presume that it will meet that standard with the dedication. In fact, at this point, I have considerable doubts whether it would. But if that's the question presented to us and the application as it now stands with the dedication, is this sufficient to meet the standard, yes or no? That's all we should decide and we don't have to decide in this case for, in a precedent we would establish for any future application, whether these structures are or not dwelling units under our code.
I agree with your analogy, Tom, that having, that whether they're dwelling units or not is not up to us to decide based on the fact that the applicant has an alternative method of meeting the density requirements.
You know, and something I'd add to this too is it's, I mean, if you look at the dwelling unit definition, it means one or more rooms occupied or designed to be occupied, I guess by people, that contain four or more of the following things. Well, I, we don't know the interiors of these structures. There's, you know, the studio cabins, the main cabins, the so-called hotel rooms. But the record before us doesn't say what's in them other than it's going to be people occupying those spaces. Do they contain any of these things? Who knows? I mean, on present record, could we make a determination whether they are dwelling units? I presume that all of them are going to have toilets, probably have showers, so there's two of the four. I assume at least the big cabins are going to have refrigeration, cooking facilities. But as for the hotel rooms and the studio cabins, are they going to have those things? I mean, we haven't been given enough on this record that I see to make a determination about some of them, but I would conclude that many of them, maybe most of them, perhaps all of them are indeed dwelling units. are indeed dwelling units. Rather, you know, than stumble over that and try and speculate on it, I would just go to the second question and say, is the revised site plan with the dedication of open space, does that meet the density standard?
Based on the plans and what I've heard today, I would have to say that it does.
And I would say the opposite.
Great.
Okay. As I mentioned earlier, it's not just open space. It's open space as a park or golf course. Now, the record we have before us shows what they say is forty percent has open space, but I don't know whether the applicant is willing to turn all of that open space into a park, since some of it appears to me to include space immediately below all of the dwellings. I also don't know if he's willing to turn it all into a park, whether it is capable of being turned into a park. Some of the commentators today that visit the area say that it's not park-like. And I, maybe this is a question for legal counsel. It says dedicate as a park, does the city have to accept the dedication? So on this record, it's not clear to me that there is that the applicant is willing to or able to dedicate forty percent of the site for a park. And I would deny it on that ground or defer it until we have more information on it, which I guess maybe leads us to whether we should leave the open, the record open for a period of time. That's my thoughts. I've been talking too long.
I'll just note that they would be required to deed restrict the open space. And so that would be a condition of approval. Should the planning commission determine that? It would require a deed restriction on that property.
But it requires more than that. Requires a change in the plan and it requires a dedication.
Correct.
So I don't know, you can't just gift things to the city without the city accepting them, right?
We wouldn't take ownership. They would just restrict the use. And it does allow for a private or a public, is how the code reads.
Assuming that the math works out, and I have not done the math myself, I would leave that to staff to calculate. I believe that that density standard is met with the dedication of the open space shown on the drawing site plan dated May fifteenth. I'm looking, thinking about other developments recently where buildings have been clustered. For example, Classic Cottage is across the street has open space in and around the different clusters. And the city has accepted that as open space to meet the density standard. Excuse me, within the development. I don't think, I'm just thinking out loud, as I recall, the Highlands Development is developing to the six and a half six and a half units per acre. Whatever the, I think it's six and a half dwelling units per acre. I don't think they've requested any special treatment under the Highlands. So I'm I'm just, I, to me, I would find the area designated as open space acceptable to meet to meet the density standard. I think it, the density standard in the area surrounding and given given our code, I think it works. Bill, Frank, want to throw your thoughts in?
They did say it was forty percent contiguous, so it's all it's not like across the street there where they take a little chunk and then add it to another little chunk and add it. He's, I believe their testimony was contiguous, that it was going to be one big landmass for their forty percent chunk.
I believe that's correct.
And as I mentioned earlier, there is no definition of open space in our code specifically other than in the C one zone, which doesn't apply here, but still it's it's a an opportunity to go to the, go to the ordinance and say, well, does it say open space anyplace? And in C one, it says devoted to usable open space such as playgrounds, sitting or areas or picnic areas. And I don't consider any of those a park. It's a space designated for something such as sitting areas or picnic areas or playgrounds. I mean, we might, we might consider it a park, but I don't see any language in here to say it has to be a park.
The the requirement that it be a park is in the density standard. It has to be open space as a park. So yes, open space can be those other things you described. But in the density standard, it has to be as a park. And it just seems to me that a park isn't an accumulation of backyards, front yards and other spaces. Maybe that happened across the street with the other development, but this issue might not have been raised then. I don't know. That doesn't stop us from applying it the right way this time. I don't consider and I don't know if they get to the forty percent unless they include that strip of land and on the downside of of all the structures. And are they going to allow that to be a park that that the public can walk across? It seems to me that a park means one, it means a confined area open to the public. And I don't, I can't tell from what they've given us so far if they're willing to or able to create that.
Can you, can you remind me, Tom, where you, where you got the the word park?
Yeah, if you'll. So if you look at section three point oh, three oh, special residential recreation zones. And if you go down to page, what's page twenty three of the zoning code, at least my copy? Paragraph four, four A. So it says at the end of the second sentence, is reserved or dedicated as permanent open space as a public or private park area or golf course. As as I mentioned before, in the, in the submissions from the applicant, they took the second as and turned it into or so that it read reserved or dedicated as permanent open space or a public or private park area or golf course. And so they basically said the way they were treating it is we just have to have forty percent as open space, which you could get by side yards, backyards, front yards, other areas, any place you don't have a building or or surface. But the as means that this particular open space has to be a, meaning one, public or private park area or golf course. So you can't get public, you can't satisfy the open space requirement by anything other than a park or a golf course. That that's the way I read it. And and I don't think it seems to me what they've given us is is was based on the assumption that we just have to show you forty percent open space somewhere in here. Not forty percent park somewhere in the application. And and I would give them time to see if they can, they can do that or they're willing to, because for all I know, maybe they don't want the public walking everywhere.
Well, I I it could be a private park as well, which and and I and I guess I'm thinking animal pathways are considered part of a park.
Well, I, I view I think a park is a park open to the public. Public or private just means who owns it. I was just in L.A. at the Getty Museum. It's a private park. It's privately owned, open to the public.
But also, that was why I raised the concern earlier. When you have hotel property, I've never stayed at a hotel that is exclusive to the hotel guests that is also available for any Tom, Dick and Harry to come in and use. Hotel properties are usually designated for hotel stayers. And while they're there, it's their facility to use. If you cross that line and make it a public space on a private hotel property, therein lies the rub of, okay, me and twenty of my buddies are going to go down there and we're going to have a throwdown. Well, who's to say we're not? If it's not posted, hotel guests only, who determines then sporadically if it's okay for somebody to have a birthday bash there that's not staying at the hotel and inviting twenty five, thirty people? Or is it restricted to a park for those that are the guests of the hotel? It's like a hotel pool. You can't go into the hotel pool unless you're a guest of the hotel. So you open up the Pandora's box if you make it public because then who dictates who comes down, who stays, how many, how long, and all those problems? That's why I was trying to get clarification. I wasn't looking for it to be a public pool or I'm sorry, a public park. I was more concerned about what the restrictions would be so that it doesn't get overrun by the public on a private space, even though they're willing to make it more public. But then who determines what's the maximum occupancy? How many people can be there? How long can they be there? On and on and on.
I guess the city would. It's dedicated. I don't know.
Yeah, that's that 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 was my concern.
Or, you know, it could be that it could be the owner to say, these are the rules for everybody, guest and non-guest in this park. There's lots of parks that say, you know, no dogs. I don't know, you, nobody here after ten at night. I I guess I just don't see any way of reading this standard and reading out the as park requirement and just so that it just becomes open space, then the second part of that sentence would be meaningless. You just stop at open space.
Right.
So we're essentially hung up on the definition of a park, which our code doesn't clearly state.
Very much. This is Phil. I'm still hung up on parking. If I apply the four hundred square foot rule for parking spaces, I come up with fifty required and sixty eight provided. If I use a split definition and go with four hundred per square foot, and then on the nine buildings, I use one and a quarter per building, I come up with thirty nine required and forty six provided, and that's excluding the fourteen that are shown on the drawing. And the drawing tells me that there are forty three required and fifty three provided. So I need some clarity with regards to which set of figures we're going to use. And I know that Vito and Scott have come up with some kind of an understanding with regards to how many are to be, how many are required and how many are being provided. But I can't make it work with the information I've got. I've got too many conflicts. And it sounds like people have conflicts with regards to what is park-like space and what is space that we're borrowing from structures that are created or will be built on this property. So I'd like to get some clarification as to what truth is with regards to open space that's being provided within the forty percent. And I'd like to get a final declaration as to what is required with regards to parking and what is going to be provided? And do we still fall within a forty percent capability of giving the land for free and open use?
I I just want to check with staff or our attorney on the parking issue. I don't believe parking was a reason for denying the application.
That's true, Karen, but it but it directly affects whether you've got forty percent left to dedicate for a park, depending upon how much parking is taken up by the requirements of the development.
You want to weigh in here, Scotty?
So I mean, I think, I think this is, I understand that it's related to the forty percent capability with parking, but I think the 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 point that we're at now, the parking, if the parking, unless the parking spaces have changed between the initial application and what's been presented on remand, then I think the appropriate measure to use is the one that's been proposed. So the one that's in the actual plan in the drawing. Because the issue that isn't back on remand is whether or not that number is correct. So I I think I understood it that to be the the drawing says that forty three spaces are required and there are fifty three provided in the in the plan. I think that's the number that has been sort of settled by this narrowing of the remand process, if I'm understanding your question.
I think Phil and Tom both have the same issue is how do we resolve what is that forty percent? Other than them just saying it's forty percent. And they did say contiguous, but Tom's concerned and Phil's concerned, both are, you know, if there's not enough, or if they do all that parking, then does that take away from that actual forty percent? I think there needs to be clarification of what that free space part, whatever you're going to call it, actually truly looks like and how it's mapped out.
Does the is the question then, what does this open space include some areas that will actually be dedicated to parking under the current plan or under the current design?
Well, theoretically, it's not because that's outside of the open space. But Phil's concern is he can't get his head wrapped around the fact that if you have all those spaces, how do you have forty percent of the available land left to dedicate as open space? And then Tom is saying the same thing. If you're saying you're going to get forty or you have forty seven percent, is it cobbled together because you're taking chunks here and there, adding it all together and coming up with this number? So I think they're they're related issues. It's just the clarification of because it all stems from what is truly the open space.
Just to to clarify, that's pretty good with my explaining me better than me. What we have been presented is a map that says, here's forty percent open space. And my point is, that's not the issue. It's forty percent park. And I haven't, the applicant hasn't shown us a map that says this area will be a park and it will take up forty percent of the site, because I don't know if they're willing to translate all of what they now say is open space into a park. Maybe not. Maybe you know, it's one thing to have open space in your development. It's another thing to have park in your development. Maybe they don't want people in the public everywhere that they'd be willing to now have guests in an open space. Maybe they don't want the public in there. They haven't shown that to us. So if we say this can't, this, it's got to be more than open space. It has to be parked. Then they say, okay, well, if that's what we're talking about now, we're not willing to go with all of this. I certainly think the part right below everybody's cabin, they might say, no, we don't want that to be park. We're willing to be an open space for guests, but not park for the public. And, you know, and if it is a park, maybe you need more parking spaces for visitors to the park, non guests. What?
Well, that's a good point. And that's why when I raised the issue earlier, if it was an open, a truly open park, where are all these people coming from? And there's no restrictions and the density issues and overrun with more people than you ever expected with no controls or or what limited controls they might have.
Yeah, maybe they would say we we don't want the park to be encroaching any closer than this this far to the south. We're fine with open space farther north, but not park.
So just procedurally, I think, I don't know. And I would defer to the chair on your process, whether it be appropriate to kind of clarify these questions at this point, to the extent you can with the applicant. And then the planning commission always has the, to the extent that you're wanting to define what a park is or accept some form, or if you have an idea of what a park could look like here, then that could be potentially included as a condition of approval or more detail could be included as a condition of approval. And then if the planning commission were inclined to leave the record open, that could be another topic for to to receive additional evidence on. Again, we might have some timing issues with that.
We left the record open for seven days for the applicant to answer these questions. Well, do you do you agree that the open space has to be park? And if so, where will you put it?
Well, Tom, that then that begs the question, what is a park? It's not defined in the in the planning code. The Wikipedia would say that urban parks are green spaces set aside for recreation inside towns and cities. In lieu of nothing else, that leaves a pretty vague, nonspecific criteria.
Yeah, I was just looking at Merian Webster's. An area of land usually in a largely natural state for the enjoyment of the public, having facilities for rest and recreation, often owned, set apart and managed by a city, state or nation. You know, it's all pretty vague. It isn't defined in our code, but as a new member of the commission, I'm discovering that lots of things aren't defined in the code.
Um, this has, to my knowledge, has not been an issue. But we're finding lots of things are becoming issues as they become urgent. And I would suggest or argue that the big picture purpose of setting aside open space is in part to assist a developer to meet a different standard or density, but also to provide light, air. You know, to to have a separate area that is free of of significant development, free of buildings. Whether that area is open to the public or not, you know, to the general public, I I think is entirely up to the applicant. If it is a public park, then the city would accept or some jurisdiction would accept responsibility for maintenance. But as a private place, it would be, I think, entirely within the owners' capacity to say who gets to use it as long as it's open for air, light, animal passage, plants, and things that you would normally expect in a park in addition to some human activity. It could be complete in, you know, as far as if you look at Nahala Bay State Park, there are huge areas of it that are completely free of trails. In fact, people are encouraged not to explore those areas to keep the landscape pristine for the animal life that's there. Not that this is anywhere near a that kind of park, but there are lots of different uses for that open space. And I think that it would be within the property owner's determination how that space or who gets to occupy that space, whether it's members of the public or whether it's members, guests of the establishment alone. Go ahead, Frank.
One of the things in the Oregon Administrative Rule says that toilet facilities must be provided in every recreation park or organizational camp. So something else to consider to throw to throw into the mix. If they do dedicate it a park, now we have to have restrooms. So I mean, it just goes on and on and on, so.
All right. Is there a direction or a consensus yet? I know I'm the outlier as far as.
Well, I think we need to have some clarification of to what is it? Is it open space? Is it a park? Is it, if it is a park, are you going to designate it a park? Are you going to supply restrooms? You said something about the city participating in it. Does that land come back to the city? Why would the city be charged with maintaining something that belongs and is owned by a commercial enterprise?
No, they wouldn't. What my point was is a public park is owned by the city. A private park is owned by the owner of the property. And who owns it gets to determine how it's used. That was my only point there.
Okay, okay, because I was like, I didn't, I didn't think they were gifting it to the city.
Yeah, not not so far. I mean, that hasn't been.
I was, I was, I hear you. Here, you take care of this.
No, I'm not sure the city would would accept it.
Probably not.
Yeah.
So I think that's what we need. We need to, we definitely need some clarification on all the issues that Phil raised, that Tom raised, that we've been discussing of this too. What is that? What exactly is that space? Is it? And and can we see what it is and have them verbalize or, you know, put it in writing what it is that they're precisely proposing?
There, you know, it's it's on them, I guess, is the way I'd look at it. I would leave the record open for them to say if they want to argue that it doesn't have to be a park, they can do that. If they want to withdraw it because they don't like park, they can do that. If they want to say, here's what we think a park is and what we'll do. But they can all, they can come back with that and people can object to it, I guess, but I just don't, all I know is that sitting here before us is a proposal for open space.
Okay, and that, I think that suggestion, I don't want to get too far away from the question on density, because that is actually the question in front of us. So are we in agreement or assuming that the dwelling unit definition isn't important in this in this remand? And that because they're offering a forty percent open, that the density question is is closed? Or the dwelling unit question is closed?
Yeah, the dwelling unit is question is closed, which then opens the density question. And and they propose to answer it by the forty percent exception. So then the issue is, does it apply to what they've given us?
Yes.
I I think it doesn't, but I would give them leave to prove me wrong or to amend things.
Okay, I think we're in agreement there. Lee, what do you? Do you have anything to add or?
No, I don't have anything to add, Karen. I'm fine setting it over to get some clarification on those on those issues.
Assuming that it's dwelling unit is out of the picture.
Dwelling units out of the picture, correct.
Okay, how do you feel about that, Phil?
As long as they're specific with regards to what they come back, which I'm okay with that.
Okay, how about you, Frank?
I agree.
Okay. All right.
I want to, excuse me, Karen, one thing I want to caution this on. In the past, we've asked people to come back with information, but we didn't clarify what kind of information we were looking for. And I think it's only fair that we be a little bit more, a little bit more specific about what we want.
Always. Yeah, that that seems like that should be an automatic.
So I'm hoping that that staff, go ahead. Go ahead, Frank.
I was going to say, if you want specific answers, you have to ask specific questions.
Yeah. So I was going to recommend that staff I don't know how we do this, amend the report to show that the question of dwelling units, that the commission is not taking that question up, that we're accepting the the density standard with this deed restriction. And the question that we want to ask is this clarifying I'm just thinking out loud here, to clarify whether the applicant believes that the area needs to be dedicated as a park or restricted as a park? And what 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 questions do we want to ask about how 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 they can meet that requirement? What specifically are we are we going to ask them to come back with?
Well, I think they need to show, in my my view, they need to show forty percent of the site that will be open space as park, which is what the standard requires. So they'll they'll show that. They need to show that. And then they can tell us what they think park means. It may be that in these circumstances, park doesn't require toilet facilities that that Frank mentioned, or or doesn't require this or that, or what they get to tell us what they think park means. And I assume other people may say what they think it means. And I guess we'll have to decide what it needs to be. The first you know, the first step is on them. Here's the area. Open spaces park. It adds up to forty percent of the site. And here's what will make it a park. No structures, paths, trees, open air, flowers, birds, whatever.
I agree.
Um, I would like to clarify information that's shown on the site plan and that the applicant has suggested would be a connecting pathway through the extent of the property. Because that will affect how I determine whether the traffic patterns. I I think if that pathway is open to the public to use for bicycling or walking, that will change how I look at the traffic in that intersection. So I would like, and I don't know if this is reasonable, to ask the applicant to make a decision about whether that pathway will be open to members of public, even if the rest of the green space is not. And how that might and to show that path on a site plan from one 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 end to the other. Right now, it dead ends at the parking lot. Is that a reasonable request as well?
Yes, it's, I agree. It's a very, it's a very good one, because part of my concern about the traffic issue is not so much the increased volume of traffic, but the fact that Classic Road, which I said earlier, I walked along many times, uh, is pretty dicey. You know, there's, it needs a safe place for bicyclists and pedestrians, even for the current level of traffic, it seems to me. Adding anything more to it makes that more imperative. And if there is an alternative pathway for bicyclists and pedestrians off the road, that alleviates the the traffic concern in my mind.
Okay. So we're going to ask for the applicant to describe the relationship of the open space area and non vehicular traffic? Non-vehicular traffic.
And then, just for efficiency sake, and I don't want to interrupt the discussion, if there are additional. Information. That you're seeking from the applicant at this point.
On this question?
Yeah. Um, but I do believe that they are still here, and I don't know to what extent they are prepared. At this moment to address those questions, but if they were prepared to address those questions or accept certain. Um, requirements of the city. As conditions of approval. That might eliminate the need, at least on this issue, to leave the record open. If it would be appropriate to invite them in for those, to address those clarifying questions.
I find it hard to imagine that they would have answers to some of the things that we've discussed at the tip of their fingers.
I think, I'm thinking about it just in the way, and I don't ask, and I don't know, and if you'd rather than answer this question, but just in the way that I've seen lean use. Decisions play out, that this can be kind of an opportunity for them to say. Um, okay, I'm, we're seeing that this is what you want, we'll agree to do that. And may not have a specific design about where exactly these. Elements will be at this moment, but would be able to provide agreement that they would do that. I don't, I don't know, and I would defer to your. Process and whether that's appropriate at this time to. Ask that sort of a clarifying question.
I'm here and ready to answer, speak if you want to give me the opportunity, but I don't want to impinge upon your prerogative to set your procedure.
I'd like to see a site map that has in dark green. Open space as park.
Yeah, we, we, we've been taking notes and we're, we're well, on our way to preparing a revised site map already.
And then we'd have it in writing and. Yeah.
And also their designation as to what that space would be and their interpretation of it.
Well, I'd like to speak to that, but I'm not going to unless you invite me to. You can either hear from me now, or you can hear from me in a letter that I'm going to write in the next seven days, so. I'll give you your choice.
I, I guess my question is. If we're holding the record open for additional information from you, are we holding the record open for additional information from everyone on this question? And that, I think, is a legal question.
Could we?
I believe you.
To the intervenor? Or does it have to be everybody? In the public?
Typically, it's the, it's, it would be open for a period of time for additional evidence. Could be limited to specific issues or could be limited, or it could be limited just to the remand issues generally. Um, if there's specific information that you would like, I think those, that would be an opportunity for all of the participants to submit additional evidence on that point. But then there would be an, and then there could be an additional period. Of time for the applicant to respond to any additional evidence that was submitted.
That seems to me pretty. Elaborate, maybe it should just be the applicant and submit something and staff response, and then we. Decide. If that's permissible. I didn't think I was throwing the, the record open to everybody.
That, that was my question as well.
Um. I mean, I, I think this is. So essentially what the information that they're providing is they're showing, they're providing additional information about how they're going to meet this condition of approval. That this be forty percent dedicated open space for a private park.
Private or public?
Private or public, yeah.
I mean, just what the standard says. I'm assuming it's private, that refers to ownership. I don't know, maybe they want to give it to the city, which would then make it public, but.
I don't think the city is going to want that ten feet in front of the buildings.
Yeah, where all the golf balls land.
Um, and to be clear, it shouldn't be considered a given because there's liability and costs associated with taking on property. I, um. Yeah, I see that Sean Malone has raised his hand. I don't know if, if there's. So, if you want to also hear from him on that specific question about whether the record would be left open. I do think, and off the top of my head, I don't have a, a clear answer on whether you would have to reopen the record. In its entirety on this issue, that is, you would have to reopen the record for additional evidence to be submitted. Um. By all parties.
Could we limit it to written submissions? So, I mean, I.
Yes, it would be limited to, yeah, it would be limited, it could be limited to written submissions.
I've already read eight hundred pages, two hundred more. Won't kill me.
Um. I don't feel like I can make that determination on my own. So let me pull the commission, shall we leave the record open on this issue? For seven days?
Written submissions only?
Mm-hmm.
It seems to me that it's required. I mean, I, I, I certainly, I certainly have no problem with it. In fact, I think it's necessary.
Okay, Lee?
I support that.
Phil?
Yes.
Okay, I support that too. So let's move on to the next issue then. Um, which is. Let me see where my. Many pieces of paper? Um. I guess the. Uh, drainage, is there more information that we need to get from the applicant on stormwater?
I didn't think so.
There's an increase in the parking requirement.
I think Scott covered that, and it's all pretty well regulated, so I think that. That wasn't something that was. Outstanding or pending. Any more so than it was.
Uh, okay, let's see what staff. Applicant has indicated to staff that stormwater runoff will be handled on site. Staff recommends condition that stormwater runoff be addressed on site per the dry well. And infiltration system standards. Um, and I believe if there are any changes to the parking. Um, requirements, and that will change the stormwater and drainage standards, and applicant has indicated that they will. Handle those. Are you satisfied, Phil?
And?
That, that the staff will be able to manage that in the building permit process?
I, I confirm.
Okay, anybody else have an issue with that? Okay, so then we will not be concerned about. Stormwater. Um, I guess. The, the last two are substantial harmony. Question and the traffic questions. Let me ask first, is there additional information that we would ask? Or testimony on the traffic issue? Specific questions, information that we need to receive on the traffic?
Well, there seem to be some disputes between what people think is going to happen, what is actually happening, what's supposed to happen, so. Is, is there, that every time I heard a five-way stop, I mean, and it came up a number of times. Is, is that just because there's a lot of misinformation about what's happening at that intersection? Or is, are people reading it wrong, or why, why do they think that? Is that something that? That needs to be addressed? Because the, the applicant says, no, there's, there's not a five-way stop. People were testifying that, yes, there will be a five-way stop, so there's some confusion.
Frank, I think that stems from the driveway of the proposed project being sixty-five feet away from the intersection. So there's a congestion issue there that's exacerbated by the, by the driveway, but. The information from the traffic engineers seem to waylay concerns. Right or wrong, I mean, they're the professionals. I, I don't know anything about traffic engineering, so. I'm, I'm relying on the, on the experts to give us information that's pertinent and helpful.
And it's a bit of a misnomer to call it a stop. Does anybody even stop there? People just.
I, I do.
They, oh, well, good. I was like, they could write so many tickets at that intersection.
I'll just note that the city's traffic engineer is here. If you have specific questions of. Him, I'm sure he'd be happy to respond.
Bill, did, did you have a hand raised, Phil?
Um. Yeah, I've, I've got a question with regards to the parking and the collection of the data. I brought up the fact that was there an accommodation made for. These projects that are in process of being completed or are yet to be started? Whether a count took into consideration that. The project, the projects were. Or the traffic was counted at the intersection based on the fact that the projects were fully developed in that. And I got two different stories. The story from the applicant was the fact that they weren't asked to provide that information as if the project was completed. And then I got somebody else who was saying, yes, that is part of it, it's, it's understood that. The count should have been taken with a estimate as to how many dwellings would be on that project when it was finally completed. So, and it, it seemed to boil down to how the city presented it to. The traffic engineer. Or the applicant, so I guess I need to know from Leila. How was this worded? Because we may be asking them to go back and do something that they couldn't be required to do at all.
Sorry, it took me a second there. Um, the scoping document that was provided to the applicant is in your packet. And so that outlines how the analysis was requested, and Todd's here, and he actually drafted that scope, and since I agree with Lee. Will the subject matter expert take it from here? Todd, thanks for being here. And if that's okay with the chair.
Yeah, you bet. Hi, everybody, I'm Todd Mobley with Lancaster Mobley. We provided the scoping document and traffic study review on behalf of the city. So I can explain that a bit, and I did hear that earlier conversation. Between you and the applicant. We did include a list of, of projects. So projects that are included individually are called in process trips, projects that are approved but not built. Or developments that we expect to happen. So the, the two that we talked about earlier were the Highlands. Um, and the second one was Heron's Rest. So Heron's Rest is a total of twenty-six dwelling units. Um, the Highlands has a total of fifty-three dwelling units, so that's. What the applicant included in their traffic study. So they, we did, they did. Existing conditions, traffic counts, they applied a growth rate on top of that, and in addition to the growth rate, they added trips from. Six different projects, two of which were Heron's Rest and. The Highlands on top of that, before they added trips from Manzanita Lofts. Does that answer your question?
Uh, so they made an accommodation for the growth factor then?
Yeah, the growth factor is, is in addition to trips from specific development projects.
Okay.
So, I, I just want to clarify, Heron's Rest is not an approved development.
That's correct.
So you're counting that as potential? Uh, twenty-six?
Correct, yeah, those trips were added, we recognized it wasn't, it's not approved. Um, it's started the process, but hasn't been approved, so, um, yeah, technically, that's, those aren't approved trips, but.
Okay, and you only counted fifty-three units for the Highlands?
That's correct.
That's the fifty-three that have been approved?
That's, that's my understanding. I wasn't involved in those approvals, but that's. My understanding on why that number is fifty-three, yeah.
Okay, and I think that site capacity is something like three hundred? Was that considered?
I don't believe so. Other than the inclusion of a growth rate, but I think the specific. Amount of development for the Highlands included was fifty-three dwelling units.
Okay.
Yeah, that growth rate is nominal compared to the potential of fifty-three versus three hundred.
Correct.
So there's. There's a, you could, you could argue there's some discrepancy there, uh, and depending on how long it takes for those three hundred to get built out. I don't know if that, that, that percentage that is used for the growth rate is going to be accurate.
True, and I, and I don't, I'm not familiar with how the approval went for Highlands exactly. But. It's important to note that we typically would only include these additional trips for projects that are already approved. Heron's, ones like Heron's Rest are a bit of an exception. Um, but it's not the applicant's burden to look at. Ten years from now in the future when other development occurs, so I just, just to make that clear.
Yeah, and they made that point earlier, and that's totally acceptable, because you can't. What am I supposed to predict twenty years out and then consider all the development that's on them when that development comes up, and for us to assess at that time? What their capacity could be, but just, just for the general conversation, we still need to kind of, you know, we don't live in a bubble. And we, we do know what we need to anticipate.
Correct, yep, that makes sense.
So, um, if that has been clarified to the commission's content, are there questions? About the traffic study or traffic impact? Um, that we need to leave the record open for additional information on?
Well, well, just the one you and I discussed. Earlier, that it seems to me to be related to. The pathway. Through the park. You know, and we're waiting for them to talk about, to tell us about that, but that pathway seems to me, as I said before, kind of imperative in terms of. Our decision about the traffic impact. Because, I mean, the, the studies don't show a lot of additional traffic. But if you think that the camel is already loaded. Fully with straws, this may be the one straw too many. That's less of a concern if, if we can get bikes and pedestrians off the road.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's part of, yeah, it's, it's part of the other question, and the question's been asked, so I don't. I don't have any other concerns about traffic. I mean, I know it's, it's messy at that intersection, but we rely on the experts. To help us with that and with clear sightlines. Um, and signage, uh, appropriate signage, I, I think that traffic. I, I don't have any. I don't have any more questions about the traffic that I would ask the applicant or anyone else to clarify. Are we in agreement on that?
I concur, Karen.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, great. So we have no more questions on the traffic. That leaves us. All right, that leaves us with the harmony question. Is there additional information that we need from the applicant? Or are we prepared now to make a determination on whether, the question about whether the development is in harmony?
Well, I agree with the applicant that a lot of people are reading this backwards. It doesn't say that the proposed development has to be in substantial harmony with the existing development, but the other way around. If if we allow this development, is that gonna impede the planning of developments later around this? But most, most every places else is already built out. And I didn't hear anyone saying that this will preclude harmonious other developments in the area. So I don't I don't see a problem here.
Yeah, the only potential future development in the immediate area is at the northwest corner of the intersection or north of Classic cottages. And there have been, to date, there's no plans for any development or improvement in that lot that I've heard of. That would be the only, only area that might be impacted.
There is the additional portion of the Highlands that has not been developed that's closer to Classic. There's a lower portion there. We don't know what that is going to look like either. I would say that I agree with Tom's definition and the applicant's interpretation of what our code says, and that is that I guess unfortunately for the developments already happened around it, this is pretty much the last piece or, you know, one of the few last pieces of the SRR zone to be developed. And we really can't look backwards and require this development to have a more strict definition of harmony than the ones that have gone before. So I am in agreement that there is not an issue technically with the way our code is written. And we have to live with that, in my opinion. I know it's disappointing to a lot of, this is editorializing here, but it's disappointing, but I agree that we've been reading that oh, wrong. And that I don't have an issue looking forward with this development harmonizing with whatever comes next.
This is editorializing too, but I'm new to this role, but that requirement is backwards. The way I think people are reading it is the way you would expect and the way it should be written. So that, you know, the people that have moved there first, when the development comes along later, it should be harmonious with the people already there. It's backwards. We have to take it as it is. And I don't, I can't. I can't see how this development would preclude residential development across the way, as Lee said, or down at the Highlands, or it's not like they're putting in a a rendering plant that would foul the air downwind. But at some point, the city needs to fix this thing and make it read the way most everyone would expect.
But aren't we being contradictory here? If we're saying that we got it backwards and we're saying that they can't have any more restrictions than the one previous to them. But we're saying those that build next have to be in harmony with what exists. Then why can't we be saying the exact same thing about this project? That it needs to be in harmony with what exists? Because if the, if the lower development of the Highlands has to be in harmony with whatever they do. We're, I'm having a hard time with that. It sounds like we're being very contradictory. Because if the standard is what you said is it's backwards. And they don't have to comply, but the next ones do because they built first. Well, that, what about the people that built with what you just said? Those that built prior to this particular project have the rights to say, hey, look, you have to be in harmony with what we've done.
No, they don't. The ones that build after this don't have to be in harmony with this. They just have to build in a way that doesn't preclude somebody coming later.
But that's still, it's always the next one out. So why is this one not the next one out? You know, that's what I'm having a hard time with. So if, if it doesn't preclude this one, but it does on the next one and then the next one after that, it just seems like. Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't read it that way. And it's also very subjective for the, for the community. Because when you say in harmony, you know, there's, what does that mean? It means something to me, means something different to you. And I think the public has a hard time sort of understanding because in harmony, what, that's so generic and so open for discussion as to what that might even be. But regardless of that, I still don't understand why this one, if you're saying it's backwards and they're they don't have to be held to any kind of restrictions, but the next one does, then that doesn't make sense either. Help me here.
I don't, I don't think the next one does. The next one is subject to the same rule in that, that if Highlands develops the lower portion next, then they can't develop that in a way that precludes development up at the other end of Classic. So it's, I, I I agree. I think it's backwards to what it should be, but we don't get to live with what it should be at this point.
So what would be out of harmony?
Is what it says.
What would be out of harmony? What would be, you know, you can't build an English castle or, you know what I mean? Like what would, who defines that you're out of harmony?
I think it's the use would be out of harmony. So I think that's what we're talking about is the use of the property.
Not the look of it or, well, just what?
Yeah, we can't, we don't have anything to say about the look of it. Unfortunately, again.
All night driving range with lights.
Out of harmony.
Yeah. Would be out of harmony with the current development. And maybe would preclude the next place down. They wanted to build homes there. I.
And that's a good example.
But if it was zoned and they were allowed to do that, then there's, then this could be out of harmony, but not illegal. Just like this particular piece of property is zoned, so they can do it. But even if the neighbors thinks it's out of harmony, well, too bad.
Well, you're right. It is weird to think of something being substantially out of harmony, as vague as that is, with something not yet planned or built.
Right.
But that's what it says.
But that's what it says. And I'm open to, but I haven't heard anyone saying that this development, if built the way proposed, means that you can't plan for the next development over. I don't see how this is going to preclude other residential developments in the area. Am I missing something?
Nope.
Bill, do you have any thoughts?
No, not really.
So are we in agreement with? I'm going to have to find that section again. Sorry. The staff report says that the planning commission will have to decide without reference to the comprehensive plan, whether the application meets this requirement. And that is that the area around the development can be planned to be in substantial harmony with the proposed plan.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the paragraph, the two paragraphs just above and under findings is that the the council before us looked at it the way many of the commentators did. Is this in harmony with what's already there? The second paragraph says, an alternative interpretation is that this requires harmony with respect to future development. I think we've just had the discussion that we were looking at it as the alternative interpretation. I think the consensus was that's the correct interpretation and interpreted, interpreted that way. I don't see any evidence that this isn't met.
I agree.
Well, that's, but can we argue the intent of that statute? Or do you think it's cut and dry? It's black and white? Because that seems to be where the argument is. The intent of that statute when it was written, did it mean what most people think it means? Or did it mean what you're saying now?
Well, I can tell you this without getting all lawyerly on you. But for the last twenty some years, the Oregon courts have made clear that when you're looking at laws, regulations, ordinances, you interpret them according to the plain meaning of what's written. You don't speculate about what was intended. If the meaning is plain, that's what you apply because this is what everybody is looking at and relying on. And you know, if if it says you can't do this, you can't through interpretation, say, well, what they really meant is that you can do this. You know, you got to read it as it's written. And, you know, the applicant's entitled to have it interpreted that way. So I think, I don't see there's any room for finding an intent contrary to the plain language. My view. And I don't think that Luba or a court would uphold a decision based on you know, a conclusion about intent that doesn't conform to the plain language.
I think we all wish it was written differently. But we have to, as Tom says, we have to go with the way that it's written, which explicitly limits our discussion to future development, not past development in terms of the term harmony.
Are we in agreement with that? I mean, if somebody can defer and we can do a we can do a vote if we need to.
I'm still having a hard time with saying, when you, when we talk about future developments, this is the current future development. So I don't understand how that comes into play with future developments if it doesn't come into play with this one. And I'm not just saying, I'm not saying that we, that they don't have the right to do what they want to do. I just have a hard time grasping how it doesn't affect this one, but only future ones. If we backed up two years from today, we'd be talking about this as the future. And that would apply. So, yeah, so I, maybe I'm just maybe it's been too long on this Zoom call and my mind was fried, but I just don't understand. But so I can't, I can't be in agreement with it.
Okay. Bill, how do you, how do you feel about it? Did we already capture your, your thoughts?
Well, to me, it boils down to who determines what harmony is? Who determines what disharmony is? So I'm thoroughly mixed up.
Well, I guess we determine what's disharmonious. But the way I see it is, is this development disharmonious with future developments that could be planned? I don't see it. I haven't heard evidence of some future development that this one would preclude.
So in a hypothetical, I'm just to take your previous hypothetical, if classic street cottages had been developed as a driving range that was open until eleven o'clock at night with lights, that development might preclude Mr. Sorelli from being able to build a thirty four unit housing development. Because the lights and the noise and the traffic from the previous development would make his difficult to develop or sell. So looking at it that way, this development, the hotel unit, does it make it more difficult for the Highlands, assuming they're the next to develop a piece of property across the street, the lower portion of that? Does this hotel make it difficult, more difficult for them to develop outright use, which would be single family homes?
Well, them as developers could argue, look, we don't want a hotel next to the single family homes that we're about to build. So then who's in harmony then? So, you know what I mean? It's just, it's sort of a circular argument because then, hey, I had this, I bought this property way before Mr. Sorelli did. And we had planned all these custom homes there. And now you're going to throw up a thirty four unit hotel with traffic and parks and people and noise. And when that's not what we intended, so that is not going to be in harmony with what we intended. So that's what, it's just, you know, we kept going around in circles. So they could argue that, yes, it's going to impact us negatively. But when do they get to argue that? Do they get to argue that now? I mean, they have the property, they own it. They haven't said anything, obviously. They haven't said anything obviously, but would, would they, could they, should they?
I, I think the way our code is written, the only thing that they can argue is is what I'm planning to build here going to disallow or be unharmonious with the next one down the road. I, I don't think we can, we can look backwards with the way our code is written. We can only look forward to, is this going to preclude somebody else from building an outright use?
No, but that's what I'm saying. So would building a hotel on that space potentially create a problem for somebody that was going to develop that Highlands? Because they could argue, you know, that would be their argument. Going forward, not going backwards, going forward, that hey, but obviously the argument is it's in, it's in an SRR zone and it's, it was allowed and they followed all the rules and you know what? If you don't want to build homes by it, I guess that's your option at that point.
And I guess, I guess that is the question is this development, does it preclude someone else from building an outright use that is harmonious with this development?
Now, the current builder would argue, yes, it is harmonious because we're doing A, B, C, D, E. And then it comes back down to what does harmonious mean? Because, because it is, you know, sort of vague.
But we haven't heard any testimony
Right.
that this project will be disharmonious with the next project.
Correct. That's true.
And we have to base it on the record.
Well, the next phase of the Highlands would may add traffic to Classic Road, but the question is, can it be planned in a way to be in substantial harmony? Yeah, by widening Classic Road. I mean, you can plan it. This isn't, I don't see how this development would preclude a permitted use in area around it. I, I don't, I haven't heard evidence to that effect.
How do we move forward on this?
Well, if there's not consensus and maybe Frank isn't on board yet, then I guess we could ask, call for a vote. I I could move and that would bring about a vote.
Okay, let's do that.
So I move that we accept the alternative interpretation suggested on page nine of the staff report. And then down below, find that the evidence in the record supports the applicant's conclusion that this criterion is met.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. It's been moved and it, and seconded to accept the alternative.
Interpretation.
Interpretation, thank you. I abbreviated in my notes and I couldn't read my abbreviation. The alternative interpretation on page nine of the staff report based on the evidence in the record is, did I say that well enough?
Yeah, if you go down to the first bullet point.
Oh, that criterion is met?
Yeah, although the last part of that sense, it should approve the application. We haven't decided whether it meets the other criteria, so that's not appropriate at this time.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Respectfully opposed.
Okay. Thank you. The motion is carried. Okay, so at this point, there are some revisions to the staff report that we've discussed. We're going to leave the record open. Shall we go through the recommended, uh, recommended conditions of approval now or wait until we have a complete record? And then vote the entire application?
I think we should wait until we have the entire application.
I agree.
Vote the conditions. Okay, all right. What's, what are our next steps?
Do you need a motion to set this or to leave the record open?
I think we probably should.
I'd like to just add one point. I know that there, so the the issue that I understand the record to be open for is limited to that first piece that you discussed on the density standard and specifically relating to the park and the proposed, the proposal for the park. And whether this use can meet the 40% open space requirement for a park.
Yes, and I think with an additional information about the relationship of that open space to non vehicular traffic.
Okay.
That testimony was proposed by the applicant and I, we, I think we need to have that fleshed out a little bit.
Okay. I'd also like to suggest leaving the, the record open on a, also a very limited issue, but to the extent that any parties believe that testimony was provided. I know that you sought, that the planning commission sought clarification from the city's contract traffic engineer. And typically that wouldn't be considered, that would be considered a clarification with staff. But to the extent that any party believes that that was testimony that they be permitted to submit a response to that, or that any other testimony occurred in deliberations that they permitted to respond to that.
That specific item on traffic? The record is.
No, I don't think so, but it would be limited to any, it would be limited, the limitation would be limited to the party pointing out what testimony they believe occurred during deliberations and then their response to it. So it would be very narrow issues.
Okay, is that, is that clear to the commission?
Yes.
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 Great, okay.
Karen, I think that I know we're on a clock, not today, but for this, for this proceeding. And I think that we need to make sure before we say seven days, that the applicant has adequate time to prepare.
Okay, I think the requirement is the minimum of seven days? Are you suggesting that there might be, that that might need to be extended?
I'm suggesting that the applicant should let us know what kind of timeframe they need in order to complete in order to complete their submission.
Seven days is fine.
Seven days is fine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we should turn that into a motion. And then I believe we should set a date to reconvene on that, on those minor issues.
I move that we leave the record open as discussed for seven days.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Any further discussion? All in favor of leaving the record open for seven days, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so what is our date for reconvening?
If I can make a suggestion, the, the, so leaving the record open for seven days, you bring it to the sixth week from today. And then there would be additional information that may need to be summarized or at least attached to a new staff report. To go back before the planning commission. So that could be issued on the seventh and then the 14th for a new hearing on those limited issues or for it to come back. And that would give seven days for people to consider the staff report and prepare any response that they may have to new evidence that was submitted.
I'm in court on the 14th. Can't get out of it.
And we have a little bit of flexibility in the, in the timeframes here, but that week would be.
Leila, what does the city's time look like?
So if we can't do the 14th, we can make it work on the 15th. But we are up against now the, the clock is really we should be cognizant of that. So I would recommend the 15th.
15th works for me.
When is the 15th, please?
Thursday.
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 I would prefer not to do it in the morning.
Same here.
I would make sure the applicant can meet that timeline too.
Yeah, which is why I'm raising my hand. I'm actually going to be on vacation from the 10th to the 15th of June. So I would, we would actually be willing to do an even shorter turnaround period if you wanted to get it heard on the ninth. I mean, quite frankly, we can, we could just have to the end of this week to submit our, we only really need three days.
So that would put us the week of June 5th. I would ask that it not be on the 7th. But we would need a week to respond. So if you guys submitted something on, if you want to help me out here if I'm wrong, but the night, the second, do we need to allow seven days after that?
I mean, I, I can commit to getting you our submission by this Friday, which is what, the second?
Second.
And you can report from there as you see fit. I mean, if, if holding the, the next hearing between the 10th and the 15th is the only option, then I mean, I have people to cover for me. So that's not completely out of the picture. I'd prefer it not to be, but if that's what you have to do, that's what you have to do. I'm just offering to accelerate our response time if that could get us a hearing by the ninth.
I mean, we could also consider the 16th. And then if that does, if that does run us into, I don't think it does, but if that does run us into a timeframe issue on the clock, then perhaps applicant would agree to a one day extension to allow for the, I don't think it does.
Yeah, we'll also agree to some clock extensions if necessary to make this work too.
The 16th? Are we available in the morning of the 16th?
When is the 16th, please?
Friday.
Friday.
Friday, I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm, I'm good too. And I think it's fair for Mr. Peterson to be able to attend to his client.
I have a commitment at 3:30 on Friday, the 16th. I can delay that a little bit. I can be a little bit late, but I would very much like to meet my other commitment. It's if it's, if afternoon is the only time that works, I, I will, I will change my commitment. But if we can do it earlier in the day, I would appreciate it.
Were we talking 10 a.m. on the 16th?
That's really up to city staff.
Okay.
It works for staff, so that's a part of the commission and the applicant.
Works for me.
Same. Okay, here.
Okay, 10 a.m. on the 16th?
We just quickly, sorry, to overstep if I am, but would the applicant be willing to extend the clock a week to allow staff time to write staff?
Yeah, yes, we will.
After the 16th? Is that, we'll just add seven days to the full clock, so.
It's a 120 day remand clock that you want extended for a week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, we'll agree to that.
Okay, great. Okay, is there anything else that we need to do on this? Okay, then I am going to, we're not closing the hearing. What are we doing? Closing today's meeting on this issue. I do want to make sure that we meet the rest of our agenda. So those of you who are not interested in hearing about future updates and or approving our last minutes can go away if you like with my thanks. It's been another banner time commitment for everyone, and I truly appreciate all the thoughtful testimony that we received today. It's very meaningful. Thank you. Okay. So let's move on to approving the minutes of the I got it right here, March 20th meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, subtractions? Go ahead, Tom.
My name is spelled C-H-R-I-S-T.
Thank you.
It's written without the H throughout.
We will make that correction. Any other additions, subtractions, corrections? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Move that we approve the amendments as just corrected.
Aye. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that? Lee? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? John, did you vote on this one, John?
I did. I voted aye.
Thank you. Okay. General updates.
We have nothing in the hopper other than the 16th at 10 a.m. And then I guess my question would be for the 19th, are we going to keep the regular meeting or, or not, the 19th of June? That might be a Leila question.
Anything on the agenda or any applications?
I, I don't have any applications right now.
The only thing we had scheduled for the 19th, which is a little bit less than ideal, would be the transportation systems plan update, but that is actually a holiday for the Oregon Department of Transportation. So a couple of staff that would normally be engaged in that discussion will not be available. The TSP, I just got a copy of it last week. So I'll defer to the commission chair to determine whether or not we do that then, or we can do it in, at the August meetings.
Not July.
Not July.
Yes.
Been a long day.
How do you get anything else done?
Scott, do we, can you project out to July? Do you know if anything's coming down the pike?
We don't have anything that would make the July agenda.
Okay. I think then I would be more than happy to defer the transportation plan unless it's going to hold up any other city business to our July, regular July meeting and give staff a little tiny bit of a break. Okay, should we do that?
Sounds good.
That's great.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you all so much. It's really nice to have three new faces to look at.
Thank you.
And I appreciate all of your thoughtful deliberations. And I appreciate all of your thoughtful deliberation today. And with that, I am going to declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Bye bye.